... plan 2045, and we're going to start our evening this evening, our meeting this evening with the city's land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands that we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments have removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from their land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. All right, so that being that this evening is a special meeting, we will start with taking public comment. And so we'll take public comment here at the beginning of the meeting. And so if you're interested in providing public comment on the general plan, now is the time to do that. And then for the city's application to housing and urban development pathways, removing obstacles housing grant, we do have a business item tonight, and we will have another opportunity to make public comment on that item at the end of the meeting as well when we hear that. And so I, we don't have as many people here as I thought, so, but we will be limiting the overall public comment time to an hour, but I don't think we need to worry about that. And so we will have three minutes for comments. And so now is your, your time to step up to the podium, and we will hear those comments. If you'd like to make public comment, now is the time to line up.
Good evening, commissioners and council members staff. It's good to see you all here. The, I don't have any real specific comments I want to say. I look forward to just your general discussion. A few things I want to say. When I look at the general plan, there are three, four things I look for. One is things that I don't agree with. Those could be matters of opinion, but I think they should be discussed. Second are what I call inconsistent, internal inconsistencies. These are things where one section doesn't match another section, and that includes also errors, fact. Third are things that I think are impossible to put into actuality. In these cases, I think sometimes the city is legally liable. Case in point here is land use policy, LU1F. It says that the purpose shall be to maintain an appropriate balance between single-family housing on individual lots and multi-user housing types. I think that's an impossible statement, and I'm sure we'll get to a lot of this stuff. We're working with a working draft. This is not a final recommendation. I think you all know that. And the fourth thing are phrases or sections that are vague and open to interpretation, either by current people or people who haven't met who may be on the commission in the future. The, what I have trouble with, as you know, is this process that we're seeing. I submitted 30 items for land use. None were discussed. The Humboldt Association of Realtors submitted things. That was not discussed. All in all, over the last year and a half, I think about 200 items have been brought forth to the planning commission and not openly discussed. I understand that you read them, you think about them, you incorporate them, but not, we don't have evidence of that. It's unsettling. I regard all of you as intelligent people capable of making up your minds. What also bothers me is when I think, see things that I think are not factually accurate, and I see this a lot. It really bothers me. There's an ongoing pattern of things that are not accurate. For me, if there is something which is kind of exaggerated, or sold, or promoted, I'm suspicious because I think the Gateway Code, Gateway Plan, and the general plan should speak for themselves. They don't need any exaggeration or promoting. The, I've written to you today, I'll be writing to you more in the future. I hope you read it, and I encourage you to look at my website, arcata1.com. The staff report has about 15 examples of what I consider to be exaggerations. It talks about thousands of people that have been engaged. I disagree. It talks about a broad outreach to the disenfranchised or minority community. I disagree with that. The report that's mentioned had a total of, oh, excuse me. Thank you very much.
Good evening. The first thing I want to address is the health element. That's an element that we haven't talked too much about. And under the umbrella of the, the health element, we have the noise element, and we also have the safety element. These are two elements that I have sent over the last year and a half extensively what is happening as far as the example, the noise element, where we have quite a few number of cars that have purposely exceeded the allowable limit of the state of California and have tried to work, reach out to the city for the last year and a half. Absolutely nothing has been done on this, and it's, it's very disappointing because I know that the governor and also the attorney general of the state of California are, this is very important to them. There was a new law last week that was signed of the governor dealing with noise. And I'd also bring up the point of the safety element. This is something that I didn't talk about a year and a half ago, but just over time and seeing what has happened in the city from the standpoint of individuals being killed by cars, individuals that are being critically injured in the last month. And I've also addressed this from the standpoint of why nothing's being done about it. And, you know, a year and a half ago, it was, we don't have, our police would say, this isn't a priority, and we don't have the resources. And now we have had police officers that are hired. I don't see any changes in this area at all, and we still are seeing unacceptable numbers of people that are being injured. And a small population of this town is unacceptable for anybody to be injured. And I know this is something the governor has talked about recently throughout the whole state of California from the standpoint of the increase of people on bicycles or in crosswalks being, being injured or killed. So I'll give you a failing grade in that, and there's been just absolutely no attempt to address this. So I would also address the fact, the fact that, you know, a lot of time has been spent on, you know, the gateway project as from the standpoint of what incentives we're going to give to the developers. Unfortunately, we haven't really invited the developers in on this conversation because it's, it doesn't really matter what we're offering if they're not going to, you know, accept those and use those incentives to build. So we've had Dan Co., and we gave, we had Dan Co. give a presentation at least at Ollie Cal Poly, and they kind of spelled some things out that are pretty critical. And I think this is a point at the time, whether it's four stories, five stories, six, seven stories, that you should be able to get a ballpark figure from developers exactly what, what the rents are going to be for these apartments, whether it's one, two, three stories, and tell the public what, what actually the rent's going to be. What would the rents be for affordable units? Thank you.
Hello to staff, commissioners, council, and others here tonight. My request is in reference to the circulation and mobility element, which is not being discussed tonight. But it's, the KNO cuplet is still mentioned in the mobility and circulation element of the general plan. And just requesting inconsistency with the city council's August 22nd joint study session directing staff to remove the KNO cuplet from the gateway draft. Also, TSC, in addition to making their recommendation on the gateway draft, again, also made that same recommendation on the circulation element of general plan to abandon the cuplet and preserve the KNO L Street rails, trails corridor for Linear Park and for my part for the future Great Riverwood Trail. So hopefully that can, attention can be paid to it. And thanks. Good luck for tonight.
Anybody else here in person to make comment on the general plan?
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and I make in general comments. I just want to remind all of you that when I spoke at the last study session, I talked about three things, and the power of three is really important to me. And, you know, this is made out of triangles, and the triangle's the strongest form in the world. And what I mentioned last was safe, sane, and affordable when it comes to making our town livable, safe, sane, and affordable. We need to think about all those things. Another three is diversity, equity, and inclusion. And there's a lot of things that come in threes that we really need to think about. And I just think about creative minds like Buckminster Fuller, who created the Geodesic Dome, and how our CATA, our small rural college town, can stay in that flavor of small rural college when we're deciding how to safe, sanely, and affordably grow for the benefit of a livable community. So, you know, I speak in broad generalities about this because others know more and want to say more about specifics. But one of the things we need to recognize is the history of, of planning the general plan, and it involved the staff. It involved the elected and appointed commissioners and city council. And it involved a lot of effort on the part of people in the community on different committees working on the previous general plan. People who were on the planning commission have shared with all of us that history of how it was a very involved thing. So the third side of the triangle, I think, is missing a lot in what we've been doing of late. And some of us are here to just remind you that it's the people who live here that need to have their voices heard as much as the people who work in this building and the people who are sitting at this table. So please remember the people in our small rural college town and make the future safe, sane, and affordable. Thank you.
All right.
Hello. Quite the group. Dave Mizerv from Arcata. I live up in the Sunset District. And I live on Grant Avenue, actually. And what I'm addressing here is, I mean, the general plan deals with the city in different zones, and it breaks the city down into zones that make sense for the most part. There's the downtown, there's the North Town, there's the, you know, east of G Street. There's, you know, certain areas that are laid out, and they all kind of make sense with neighborhoods. I consider that I live in the Sunset District. But somehow, where I live, you know, adjacent to I Street, is now part of the Craftsman's Mall District, which means, and if you look at that district, it's kind of, I call it Jerryplandered, but it's got the north end of I Street, which is really part of Sunset as we consider ourselves. Then it's got the Craftsman's Mall, which is going to be the densest area in the whole city. And then it also includes this kind of mixed area, which is partly light industrial and partly agricultural. So I ask myself, why has the portion of the Sunset in which we live been included in this strange, mixed area, which has, where the three areas of it have nothing in common with each other? And the answer, I think, lies in, right next to the tennis courts, which is the Strombeck Project, the proposed project there, to put 70 units in on 1.7 acres, which is high-density residential. If you live where I live, and if you drive down JAY Street every day, you know that, you know, we all pause to let someone go by because the street, when there are people parked there, really isn't wide enough for everybody to pass, as it is. There are currently 70 units in the whole neighborhood from J to Grant and up I and Todd Court. And so this would double the density there. Now, I know we need more housing, but we don't need housing in an area which is on a dead-end street and where cats and kids run in the street all the time. And I think that it doesn't make much sense to call this part of Craftsman's Mall area. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody else here in person to make comment on the general plan? All right, we're not going to go back and forth, so not seeing anybody, I guess that pretty much is everybody. Do we have anybody on Zoom this evening?
We do. Our first speaker is Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Colin Fisk. I'm the executive director of CRT Planing and Commission Priorities. We want to thank the planning commission for its hard work on updating the general plan. We think the proposed changes will, on the whole, create stronger climate policies and encourage a more walkable, bikeable, and transit-friendly community. I wanted to mention a few of the recommendations that we're particularly excited about, including removing congestion management as a policy priority, which brings the city into better alignment with modern best practices regarding climate safety and equity, committing to designing streets for all ages and abilities, and prioritizing slow speeds on all streets regardless of their classification, supporting bike transportation by incorporating protected Class IV bikeways into the plan, and unlinking bike parking requirements from vehicular parking requirements, and also adopting a new mobility equity policy and recognizing public transit as a civil right. We're also supportive of new proposed policies to explore finally removing costly parking mandates citywide and implementing a metered parking program downtown to help pay for better public transit. However, I guess our one big request of you at this point is to tighten up that language and just commit to doing those things, to eliminating parking mandates and implementing a parking meter system rather than just thinking about it some more. We know these are good policies that support transportation equity and climate action, and there's really no need for further study. So we think clearly approving them now would allow the amendment of the zoning code to remove parking mandates, mandates as part of the pro-housing grant work that you're going to talk about later, which would be removing a major obstacle to housing production. And, you know, the details of a meter program can certainly, can certainly be worked out at the time of implementation, but committing to those things now would really help to move the conversation forward and bring the city into stronger stance for climate action and transportation equity. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Colin. Our next speaker is Jane. Go ahead, Jane.
Hello.
Go ahead, Jane.
Can you hear her? Can we hear her?
Am I here?
You're here. You're all good.
Oh, whoopee. Delighted to visit with you again this evening, and I'm glad you're continuing these discussions. And I hope you'll continue to have one every month because I think they're very valuable. And I hope you do use these occasions to address some of the issues that have been raised, as Fred commented, to address some of the comments you've received. And I don't know how you're going about, go about doing that, but in some systematic way, that would be really helpful. I also think it'd be useful at the end of a session like this that somebody sit down and summarize any conclusions that came out of it, or issues that were raised that you want to have followed up on, so that we have a report out from these sessions that everybody can kind of look at. Anyway, in addition, since I'm not sure I'll be here a little later, I wanted to comment that Jen Dart, who is responsible for contracts, has done a great job in doing that and responding to that proposal. And anything you add to it tonight, she's got more work to do by the 30th. So we are lucky to have somebody like Jen doing such a fine job for the city and trying to hold everything together and bring money in the way she has consistently done. I think we, I commend the city for having a good summary of the information from the community center, well, it was, it's the neighborhood center meeting. It was on a weekday at an hour that made it difficult for many people. I think we need to, and it wasn't as well advertised as might have been, and it was kind of last minute. So I think we ought to have another town hall. We never did a community survey. I think that's lacking, particularly since we have not done the task forces development of this as we did in the past. And therefore, I recommend we work toward having another one that's open to everybody and on a weekend when most people can attend. Let's see. I can't tell how much time I have left. I think it'd be useful when you have people in line like this, that you let them know when they have like 20 seconds to go.
20 seconds, Jane.
20 seconds. Thank you. I want to praise the planning commission for bringing in a developer or someone, contractor, to talk about how to build high-story buildings today with current technology in wood framing and wood buildings that would be more susceptible to responding to earthquakes. So I think you need to have a look at that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Do we have anybody else online?
Yes. Our next speaker is Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa.
Good evening, council members and commissioners. As we face sea level rise, it is important to recognize the role that our upland agricultural and natural resource lands will play in helping the community adapt and survive. The opportunity for these lands to provide migration zones for wetlands, wildlife areas, and agricultural producers will become increasingly obvious and important over time. All that we have endeavored to protect and enhance over many decades, our wetlands, our forests, our agricultural lands, will not be completely lost if we continue to protect these lands well into the future and allow for transition and migration. While their role may change in these unprecedented times, the importance in retaining them as natural and open lands will take on new meaning and importance as our landscape changes outside of our control. The city of Arcata has a long history of recognizing the significance of these resources and has taken an active role in protecting them from development with strong support from the community. The community passion for the retention of our agricultural resources was strongly demonstrated earlier this year when the planning commission contemplated a small agricultural conversion off of 17th Street in Arcata. Sensible infill development is a vital component in the effort to protect these natural resources. However, planning for infill while simultaneously converting natural resource lands is not an action the community will tolerate. Strong policy is important in protecting these lands. We should not diminish our policies, but strengthen them. I provided you a few ideas on how to accomplish this in my letter sent earlier today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. All right. Our last speaker on, online comment is Darius. Go ahead, Darius.
Yeah. I would like...
Go ahead, Darius.
Am I here? Okay. We really do have a problem with homelessness and housing. And I would like to point out that, you know, many years ago, I'm having a little waste problems. Rent was like $100 to $200 a month, in that range. Now it's up to like roughly, in a thousand, close to $1,000 a month. Just look around at every place. We need to find, we need to get back to the $100 to $200 range, or at least as close as we can get to that because not everybody can afford that much. You know, if, if a person can only afford $100, and there's no place that will rent for $100, then they, they have to just be homeless and without a home. We want to prevent that. We need to show, you know, have compassion and find a way to provide a rent at a, at a rate that they can afford. And, oh, and another thing is, you know, because population is growing, I mean, do you have any idea what population in, in Arcata is going to be five, 10 years from now? We need, you know, the city will have to eventually start growing up. There's only one place to go up. There's only so much land, you know, square land space. So we will have to build up a little bit. But my, my take is that when we design our, our living spaces for people to live, that we should provide outdoor space and combine it with indoor space and grass and trees and plants and all that good stuff that we, you know, enjoy that makes life better. And so I just wonder, what do you think about that, all that? We have to also do it on a budget so that the people, like homeless people only, who only get social security, can afford it. Does that make any sense?
There's lots of people nodding here. Thank you.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, it's a big problem. Now, one thing we've got to address is psychology, psychiatry, you know, actually caring for the mind as well as the body of these homeless people, or anybody who is on low income or needs, you know, needs to continue to be able to continue, have a place to stay. We need to address, we need more psychologists, psychologists, doctors. We have a, our medical system here throughout this county is, is really quite laxing. I mean, it's not enough. We need to be able to get good care for people who, who need it. You know, people should be able to go to a psychologist or therapy meeting right here in Arcata instead of having to go someplace far away or do it online. And that's about all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. No more online public comment.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for your comments this evening, and we're going to dig into our discussion tonight. So we do have Heather Equinos back tonight to help us facilitate. I think those of us that were at our last study session really benefited a lot from having a facilitator and allowed us to all better participate in the discussion. And I think we really got some, some good outcomes and good discussion from that. So thank you, Heather, and we're glad that you're back. And so again, coming together tonight, especially I think digging into the, the bulk of the general plan here to learn from our planning commissioners and recognizing how much work that they have done on these elements of the general plan. And if you go back and look at the track changes version, it's, it's a lot of work. And so again, thank you to the planning commission for everything that you've put into this so far. And so also, we want to welcome Sharon Blank and Meredith Orem here to share some of their insights from the work that they've completed and how we can use that to inform our decisions going forward. So I'll invite you up, Heather, to kind of get us started and then set the, the norms here for us. And, or I guess, no, we're going to turn it over to you guys to start it. But either way, okay.
You're going to go first?
Yeah, yeah, I'll go ahead and start. Yeah, sorry. We had, we, we mixed it up a little bit just from last time. And we wanted to start with a little bit of framing. And I wanted to definitely introduce our equity partners, partners, and give them an opportunity to talk a little bit about their work as well. We've also, we, we want to let them off the hook. We don't want to keep them here for the full three hours or however long it takes us. And so they, they will be departing after they've presented and had an opportunity to answer any questions. I, I wanted to start the framing I wanted to start with was around the, the engagement that we've done over the course of the last couple of years. Deputy Director Dart is in the process of updating our community engagement report. And I had an opportunity to look at the draft of that today where she's updated our, our numbers since June of '22 when we stopped. And so just, just to sort of start high level, I wanted to let you know that from January 2021 to June of 2022, we held 92 meetings, 92 separate public engagements. Some of them were planning commission meetings, many of them were walking tours. We had will come to you sessions, whole range of different kinds of meetings, including one Spanish language meeting on the Gateway Area Plan. That 92 meetings represents 1.2 meetings per week during that timeframe, that your staff were out engaging with the public. From January 21 to current, after, after June of 2022, we transitioned into more more regular planning commission meetings. And while we held still a few of those, uh, will come to you sessions and, and those types of, uh, other outreaches, we transitioned to more formal meetings, uh, at the planning commission and city council. And so part of the reason why I'm bringing this forward is to kind of frame and contextualize the types of, of engagement that we received in that first, uh, year and a half versus what we were seeing over the, the last part of that. Still, in total, we had about 133 meetings where we've discussed the Gateway Area Plan, the general plan, um, and, you know, started from a real ground up approach back in, uh, the end of 2020 to now we're really formalized and looking at drafts of these documents in 2021, in 2023, excuse me. Uh, in January of 2022, the Gateway Plan was released and we had several meetings on that, starting in about the end of December, uh, the end of '22, December of 2022 through May 2023. The planning commission and the public and the committees had the opportunity to look at the general plan elements that we're, we're now looking at the city council level today. And so I just wanted to reflect briefly before I turn it over to Sharon and Meredith to talk about the work that they did, where I see as sort of the, you know, kind of pinnacle of the work that we did trying to get at social justice and racial equity and the work that we're doing here, to reflect on that one and a half years of what I would consider deep and broad public engagement, uh, that really is reflected in the drafts that you see now, uh, before you. Uh, the feedback that we got from folks, uh, in that early, uh, engagement, I have not seen most of those people come to a single one of these meetings. And so they never would have been outreach if it hadn't been for the work that we did. Um, and I also wanted to acknowledge that this is work that we really integrated after the Institute of Local Government Boost Training that, um, staff went to, that you directed our staff to go to and leverage those lessons, building the, the, uh, community networks, really trying to get out and do more than just, you know, posting a notice and holding a, a meeting in, uh, these chambers. And so I'm really proud of the work that our staff have done, really proud of the amount of engagement that we've done, and I'm really proud of, uh, being able to reach as many people as we did, um, in the ways that we did. And the way that I look at this is that, you know, providing, uh, access to the public through a noticed public meeting like this, uh, provides equal access. But extending the outreach in the ways that we did to, uh, to meet people where they're at, uh, is, uh, a reflection on what equitable access is. So comparing equal access where everyone has knowledge that the meeting happened versus equitable access where you're actually providing that deeper, uh, deeper level of, of work to get to people and meet them where they're at, recognizing they're not going to come to these meetings. Um, so again, as I mentioned, I feel like, you know, sort of the, the capstone of that work was the work that we did with Equity Partners with Sharon and Meredith. I'm gonna ask them in just a moment to, uh, share that work with you. I did provide you a link to the report that they provided, uh, based on that work, and we're not quite there yet. I'll let, I'll let them describe that. Um, but, you know, these, I just want to reiterate that these general plan elements that you're looking at tonight, the ones in the rest of the general plan that aren't specifically on the agenda tonight, but that you may, uh, wish to talk about, you know, were really informed by, um, by that work. And, um, yeah, and I guess I'll just stop there and turn it over to, uh, Sharon and Meredith to talk about the work that they did.
Or do you want? We're okay here. Thank you. And so Meredith is gonna go ahead and start, um, giving some general information around the report.
So thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. Um, we are, we are.
You can't hear us?
Yeah.
Okay. Get closer.
Oh.
Yeah.
How's that? Is that better? Okay. Can everybody hear?
Yeah.
Okay. If you can't, if you raise your hand and someone will signal, we'll be louder. Okay. Um, thank you to all of us for having us here this evening, um, to speak on behalf of the report and the work that we did with community folks, um, in informing the, the plans that you're working on. So we were in conversation over quite a bit of time with folks from the city about how to engage people. And David and their team, um, tried for a really long time to engage community leaders across, um, uh, including tribal leaders, including people of affinity, associations and organizations in the community. And I mean, what, and with little success, really, and people not showing up. And it was like, well, what's going on? It's like, well, people are working. They're at other meetings. They're doing other things. They have other commitments. Their plates are overflowing. Um, and, um, one of the things we said was people are tapped to give input all the time, and then sometimes it might be added, but not always. And oftentimes there's little, um, checking in to be like, hey, is this what you actually said and is it helpful that it go into a plan this way? Um, and so, um, we offered that as an opportunity, um, in the, the various networks that we've been a part of, working in TK-12 equity work and also through, um, formerly through Cal Poly Humboldt, um, and in the community, um, that we could convene a diverse group of people living in Arcata and also with experience, um, around issues of housing in this community to come together. We had young parents, we had, with their babies on the Zoom. We hosted on Zoom so that everyone could attend. Um, we had young parents, um, with their babies on the Zoom with us. We had, um, people with disabilities who wouldn't be able to get to this place, um, including their caretakers in the group. Um, we had former students. We had a high school student in our group. And so really looking as best we could across all identities to represent folks who aren't typically part of, um, this type of input. And I think it's easy to say, oh, well, people don't care. And it's like, well, no, they're doing their lives. Like, it's harder and harder to just do daily life. Um, and so it's not that people don't care. Actually, they have a lot to offer. Um, so one of our agreements was to be on Zoom. Um, the other was that we compensate people for their time. Um, and so our group, we worked along with Ron White, who's done extensive racial equity work in this area and brought a lot of it to this area. Um, he was our third facilitator and Gillan Martin was our note taker. And so we convened folks. We first had an intro. We were really talking about home and what is ideal about home to you? What is working and what do you love about Arcata? Um, what could be better? Um, we had sessions that focused on safety and housing, recreation and culture. Um, we also looked at the community benefits that were part of previous conversations and asking folks, you know, how would they prioritize what was important to them in terms of shift and change? Um, we also looked at health and transportation. Um, we offered various modes of input, so people could offer in the chat. They could share out loud. We had an ongoing Google document. We had surveys. Um, we mapped where people lived. It turns out that most people in our cohort live South G, Valley West, um, or the Arcata Bottoms. Hardly anybody is, um, east of the 101 or in the downtown. And so we did have patterns in terms of who's representing. Um, and maybe, I think my understanding is different from, um, the patterns of folks who have come to meetings to share, um, their input for the plan. Um, after our sessions, what we did was we collected the notes from Gillan and we reported back to the group. We said, this is all that we've compiled. Have we actually captured what you are wanting us to bring forth? And they gave us the okay where things were good. They gave us constructive feedback to ensure that we had added all their input. Um, and then we brought it forward.
And that checking with the group was done at each meeting. So we would have a meeting with the group. The next time we met, we'd go, this is what we heard. These were the points that we heard raised. Is that accurate? They'd give feedback. We'd make adjustments, then we'd move forward with the, the new topic.
In terms of takeaways, um, safety was noted, physical safety, um, emotional and mental as well, but physical safety was noted as the salient issue. Um, and so what we really noted was these weren't hypothetical concerns that folks had, but it was very much what's impacting their daily lives. Um, also there was a huge move around how do we support and lift up, um, the various diverse cultures and communities that are here already? Like, there's so much good work happening here and that is community-led. Also places for people to come together. Um, all of those elements seem to be overlapping, so transportation impacting, um, housing also impacting work, of course. Um, another big point, as you all know, is housing and accountability structures in terms of, um, most of the, uh, community of Arcata being renters and how do we have more support for people who are renting? If it's helpful, I can speak to limitations and what we might suggest. I don't know if that is something you'd appreciate. You would? Okay. Um, so one of the things that we agreed upon in this, um, in this work was that we would offer a framework that could be replicated over time, um, really wanting us to have accountability structures and to grow the group of, um, community folks giving input. We understand that, you know, a group of 16 folks isn't representative of everyone who lives in Arcata. Um, it's certainly not representative despite having folks who identify as native and queer and black and Latinx, um, and of varying abilities, um, and levels of education and age. Of course, our group of 16 people doesn't have experiences that are representative of everyone who identifies as, um, those identities or overlapping identities, experience. Um, and so our recommendation, of course, is to continue, um, to gather folks and convene, um, convene folks and get their input. Um, and an easy way to do that is to have a community member recommend someone that they know in their community, and you could easily just find more people, um, to convene, who I think really, they were really generous with what they offered. Um, people really wanted to share and had a lot to say. Um, so obviously, like, it would have been great that we could convene more people. Um, we also operated under a value that we were going to compensate people for their time, so the amount of money that we had was a limiting factor in how many people we could, um, meet with. Another thing that came up was, um, in retrospect, we could have done better in terms of the questions that we asked. So some of us have some policy experience, but not as much as you all. And so, um, we discovered especially around issues of medical services and health, that wow, there are lots of things that need to be addressed, but we could have been more intentional about the questions that we asked to really ensure that the input that community folks gave could inform the plan in a realistic way, also so that we weren't taxing community members and asking them to share their experiences, oftentimes which were very difficult, but then also to be able to offer to all of you, like tangible input that could really inform policy. Um, so that's a place where we could certainly improve. Other limitations. Um, Sharon and I mostly work in educational settings, and so it was new for us to work with city government. Um, and so that is kind of a different animal, really exciting to be a part. Um, and we have hosted and facilitated groups in similar ways in school settings for how to, um, bring safety to schools, um, and more equitable learning and community and, um, lifting up cultures in schools for everybody who's there. I mean, so we have similar overlapping work, but, um, not this exact thing. Those are the main things that come to mind. Um, we're happy to answer questions if you have any. The last thing I would just say is it was a privilege to be. It was a privilege to listen.
Thank you both for, you know, doing this work and, and like I can see right now, I'm, I'm sure you guys did not hear a lot of easy stories and, you know, had to be good advocates for, for folks. So thank you for, you know, bringing this report to us, um, because it is important to the work we're doing. Um, do we have any questions from council members or commissioners? Go ahead, please.
I missed the third, um, group you said, Valley West, the bottoms. What was the third area?
South.
South G, thank you.
I think I said South F, but I meant South G.
Okay, yeah. Um, I want to thank you both for the extraordinary work that you do. Um, and you had mentioned something about, um, lifting up and supporting those already here, the community-based organizations and places to meet. Super excited that in Valley West, we will be able to provide that with a community center. Um, and you also mentioned something about convening more people through referrals. And I just wanted to let you know, feel free to reach out to Kuna for the BIPOC community and certainly the Latinx community. We can definitely give you names, people that want to participate. And, um, and I did want to, um, you mentioned, or David did actually, that, um, the work that you brought to the table, a lot of these folks would have never been able to attend otherwise, so I appreciate that. I'm really hoping that down the road, we can bring in bilingual services, make the city council meetings bilingual and more accessible so that your work can continue. So anyway, um, I'm sure I'll have more questions later, but this were just some things, comments that I had right now.
Great. Thank you, Kimberly. Um, anybody else have any questions or comments, um, before we let Sharon and Meredith get on, on to the rest of their evening? Yes, thank you guys so much.
If it's okay, I have one more thing to add. Okay. Um, so our work actually hasn't finished with the community group. Um, so after we convened with everyone, we convened with folks for about eight hours, so they, we have agreed to, um, work with them for two more. Um, so with the report that we offered, um, then Sharon and I served as volunteers, um, to work with a group of folks in the region who work more with policy so that they could look at the report and see how there could be direct connects to, um, shifting policy in the plan. Um, and so that was left to more people with experience, um, former City of Arcata, um, council experience and policymakers in the region. Um, and so those folks, we met with them twice. Melissa Maris of Stepping Stone facilitated one of those, um, meetings for us, um, really looking at how can we report back to community and say, this is what we heard you say, this is what the policy looked like before, and this is how we're shifting it now to show that we actually heard, um, and that the city heard. And so there is a two-hour session that remains where David will lead. We'll be there to hold the space, um, to report back to community about, um, how what they offered will, um, can be seen tangibly in the plan. Um, the other really exciting piece of that is that Equity Arcata has been a part of that, and Equity Arcata has existed, um, for several years here. Um, and this is a real opportunity for them to be involved, um, as an accountability measure with the city and community. And so that's just a wonderful opportunity. Um, the new lead, Aubrey, I apologize, I don't remember her last name, um, but was also here in those policy kind of review implementation meetings, um, on behalf of Equity Arcata to speak to, you know, how can we ensure that we're being accountable to community and not just, um, paying lip service to their needs? So that's really exciting.
Great. Um, yes, go ahead, Stacy.
I don't know if it's premature or not, but I was thinking it might be helpful if there were a few examples that, if you know of any, that, um, you know, things that you'll be reporting back to that group, some of their thoughts, ideas or concerns that are represented in there. If you, if you had a few, it would be great to, I think, hear those.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we can, uh, point to a couple of the policies in the health element, uh, for example, um, tonight and what we're looking at. And I certainly will report back on, uh, you know, the culmination of this work when we, uh, go back and have our, um, you know, accountability discussions with the, with the stakeholders that Sharon and Meredith have pulled together.
All right. Well, if we have no more questions or comments, I think that's it, unless you guys have any, anything else to add, or if you think of it, I'm sure David can pass it on to us as well, but, okay. Well, thank you both for being here so much. Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, now I get to turn it over to Heather, I think, is the next step here. Yeah.
All right. Hello again. Again, for some of you, um, I'm Heather Equinos. I was here at the last study session. I know there was a different configuration of folks, but I'm glad to be back and glad to see all the faces around the table that are here. I was gonna shape up what we were proposing to do tonight to see if that's gonna work for you, um, and if not, how we might need to shift it. Okay. So our game plan was before nine o'clock tonight, we would cover three topics, the topics of growth management, the land use element, and the health element. In order to do that, we were proposing a process very similar to what we did last time with a slight change. Um, so it felt like I heard anyways that these topics were a little bit more technical. Um, and. So, it felt like I heard anyways that these topics were a little bit more technical. And so, in planning this session, we heard that it might be useful to have a very brief, spicy and brief overview of that given topic by staff first. And then, this is where it's very similar to what we did last time. I will just look to planning commissioners to offer additional comments, like rationale for why they landed where they landed. No pressure for everybody to speak, but if you've got something, we're just going to sort of popcorn it out. I got a request to maybe chart some of those, so I'll do that this time. And then, what seemed to work pretty well last time was then I just turned to council members and I was like, "Hey, what are your questions?" And sometimes there are statements, that's fine. We're like, sort of like, "What are your questions or topics that you, you know, have about growth management?" For example. I chart those out. Sometimes I have to ask people to pause because if there's like a number of questions in there, I just want to make sure I'm getting them accurately and completely. So, I might ask you to like timeout so I can get that right. But once we've gotten all the questions up, then what seemed to work pretty well last time was I just turned to planning commission members and was like, "Hey, of this list of questions, which ones might you tackle?" Last time, there were clear themes or like it was clear where there might be more energy around things. So, we heard from commissioners, responses to those questions. And then, if it seems like there might be different levels of support amongst council members, I can use this gradient of agreement chart where I would be asking you all to just sort of give... This is obviously not a formal vote. It's like a sense, like taking our temperature, our levels of support. And I'll move this over here if we end up needing to use it. But the idea is it would be lovely to get a sense where council members are in relationship to the current recommendation. Is your level of support a one, like, "I completely agree with this recommendation. I've got no concerns." Two, a two, "I'm supportive with minor concerns." Three, "I'm neutral or have no opinion." Four, "I have strong objections, but I'd stand aside." And five, "I cannot support this." And the reason why this can be a useful tool is if there are council members who are a two or three, certainly a four or a five, it would be useful to understand why. So that the planning commission would have the benefit of understanding, like, what's the blocking concern? So, they could consider how to address that. If it feels as though everything's rolling well and everybody's like 100% in support, I might not bring out that chart. I was cued about that. So, if that's the case, we won't use it. But if it seems like there might be some hesitancy around the recommendation, we could certainly use it. So, we can sort of identify that pretty quickly. So, that is the sequence of steps. Does this make any sense? Are you willing to try it out again? Does it seem okay?
It makes great sense.
Okay. All right, cool. And so, this is... These were our guestimates on how much time things would generally take. And we did... We are humane, and so, we aimed to build in a little break in there to give everybody a chance to get up and move. Okay. So, with that... Uh-oh. Jen?
No.
No? I was like, yes. All right. So, we're going to start with topic number one, growth management, with a brief intro to the topic from staff. And maybe it's Jen, are you on first?
I am.
Okay, cool.
And can we get the computer up, please?
Can we need that one? You need the screen?
It's going to come on the screen, yeah. Okay. All right. Wait, 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 while you pull that up. So, I'm going to go over just a brief bit about the growth management element. Oh, just a brief overview about the growth management element and kind of what the differences were. The growth management element is the first place in the general plan where the city identifies its strong commitment to conservation and desire to protect its green belt by focusing growth within our existing boundary. What that means is infill development. The main differences in the updated element are just some minor changes to make it consistent with state law. And then, added language to emphasize infill development as the primary means for housing future residents. Adding language identifying Cal Poly as a major driver for both economic and population growth. And adding language highlighting the city's commitment to protect environmental and agricultural resources. There's four boundaries, which is on the map that David brought up, identified in the growth element that are important to kind of understand. And David did talk to them in more depth in a video that he put out, so I'm not going to go over all of them really specifically, but just to get everybody familiar, there's the planning area. That's the area that's outside our regulatory authority. So, this would be outside our regulatory authority, but close enough that we would like the county to at least reach out to us if there's a project in that area. There's the sphere of influence, which is the area adopted by the housing... I'm sorry, by the Humboldt County Local Agency Formation Commission, which is LAFCO. Try not to acronym you to death. And it includes unincorporated lands that could be annexed during the planning period. This map's a little harder to read, but it's the dark brown areas that you see there. The... Yeah, it's... This one's a little difficult to read on the screen, but then there's the urban services area. This is the area that's both inside and outside city limits that the city provides or can provide sewer and/or water services to. And then, there's our city limits. So, those are kind of the four areas that the growth management element discusses in that plan. Making the urban services area and sphere of influence as small as possible is one way that the city can show its commitment to developing inside of our existing footprint. Most of the city's growth has been historically and will likely be within our current city limits and concentrated in infill opportunity areas. And we're going to talk more about that when we talk about the land use element. So, I think that that's kind of the overview that I have about growth management in case anybody else has anything else to add. David, do you have anything else to add?
Cool. Thank you. All right. So, this is the moment where if planning commissioners, do you have any, like, you know, anything you want to offer about rationale behind with the recommendation? Dan?
Well, can I... It's a point of clarity. Did the sphere of influence grow in this rendition?
Or did it shrink?
So, the sphere of influence is updated by the LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission. And they do that through a, what's called a municipal services review. And we worked with them to try and shrink the boundary as much as possible. Ideally, we would have had a sphere of influence that was basically, you know, only incorporated the areas that we actually would like to pursue annexation of. There were some areas outside of that that LAFCO felt like should be included, the entire Jacoby Creek Water District, for example. Them rationalizing that if we're providing services there already, then we should be ready to annex those areas. But we really tried to reduce the area. And this was in contrast with sort of the... Some of the policy that we took out, as you may recall, from the growth management element where in the general plan 2020, the concept was to try and use the sphere of influence as a way to exert some additional regulatory authority into these areas that are outside the city limits primarily for ag preservation purposes. But that's just not what the sphere of influence is intended for. The sphere of influence is intended to signal that we may annex these areas and incorporate them into the city and develop them for urban purposes. And so, to answer your question very... In a very lengthy way, yes, we made it smaller.
Because in the 1970s, when we did the general plan at that time, our sphere of influence... Oh. I didn't use my phone. Sorry.
So, in the 1970s, when we did the general plan, our sphere of influence went to the Indianola cutoff, as Eureka's did. And those were our boundaries that neither city would go beyond. So, it shrunk.
It shrunk. Cool. All right. That was a question from a commissioner. Anybody on the plane? Yeah. Judith?
I was figuring Scott might have something to say first, so... I kind of wanted to pull back a little bit, and then I did have a couple of sort of specific points about the growth management element. First off was we didn't really have a chance for commissioners or city council members to weigh in on the general plan process as a whole. And I think it's really important to see this process and the document as a whole document rather than just a collection of elements. One of the things that is pretty clear as we were doing our text revisions was that this really is a work in progress that we forwarded to you. And we know that... We hope that there will be some more work to do on it and that you'll support the commission in that. The second thing is, you know, when you look at the city's general plan update website right now, there's no vision statement there. In our existing general plan, the vision statement is a really, really important part of it. It's the overarching part of the plan. What this draft has done instead is it's taken parts of vision statement-y kinds of things and stuck them in each element. But when the planning commission discussed the overarching concept for the plan, we had a very confused discussion in which some commissioners felt that we were tweaking the old vision statement from general plan that was adopted in 2000. And then, suddenly, we had a completely different vision statement that was developed kind of offline by a separate group. And a majority of people on the planning commission said, "Yeah." And then, several of us didn't understand that that transition had taken place. And I'd like the city council at some point to address with us the vision statement for the plan as a whole and to incorporate some of the material from the longstanding vision for Arcata's future that suddenly just dropped out of the revised vision statement. And since the vision statement isn't online, it's not part of the general plan update that the public can see at this point anyway. It may have just disappeared, but I think it's a really important part of the plan. And I'd like to have a vision statement very prominently. And third, I guess, the gateway process has highlighted a number of issues that we've discussed in depth for the gateway. But some of us have realized that a lot of those policies really should apply citywide or at least in all the opportunity zones, not just in the gateway. And I think the draft that we've all looked at hasn't really incorporated those things. And so, those are the things that I'm hoping, you know, we can work through in the rest of the general plan update process, but also in the land use code revisions. So, sorry to take up a lot of time, but we really didn't have a chance to even talk about the general plan as a whole. And I think it's really important for us to see the whole picture and not just the elements. So, I did have some kind of specific stuff about the growth management element. And these were things that came up with the planning commission, and we kind of resolved them, but I'd like the city council to kind of weigh in as well, if possible. There's a policy GM2G, resource lands in the sphere of influence. That's the idea, that we have a sphere of influence, not just to target future lands for development, but to identify lands for conservation in our green belt and what I'm now calling our blue belt as well. The only way that the city can annex any lands for conservation purposes that are now outside of our city limits is if the city already owns them. What that means is that if there's an attempt to designate lands important for conservation that the city doesn't own, couldn't own, can't afford to own yet, but that there may be an outside entity that can assist the city with that, a land trust, some form of donation. Right now, there's no way that the city could annex those lands, and they would be then continuing to be subject to county authority only. And while we like to work together with the county, it is possible to envision a point where we have some serious disagreements with the countywide permitting processes. And I think it would be really important to have a tool to incorporate opportunities to annex lands that the city doesn't or doesn't yet actually own itself. There was another issue with growth management that I wanted to address, which is there's a policy GM4, urban services and the urban services boundary. The objective there is to extend city services only when they're not going to exceed the city's planned system capacities. But we don't have a tool that will require us to either have or have clearly adopted plans to provide that capacity first. And it would be great to have an infrastructure and service requirement policy in that plan. Doing it through an environmental impact assessment process is not enough because that requires that we look at a project's impact on the environment. It doesn't require that we look at the environment's impact on the project, including for natural hazard mitigation. And the other thing is, you know, to look at those overarching policies related to conservation on our boundaries and to figure out mechanisms to actually interact with the county and to detail those in the plan itself and not just through, you know, memoranda of understanding with the county, but to actually put them in the plan. And so, you know, those are some additional policies that I think can easily be added, but that aren't right in there now.
Thank you, Judith. All right. Did we get them all? Okay. I want to honor what I said to be the process of this is okay, which is hearing if any of the other planning commissioners had other things they wanted to popcorn out before we take questions. Commissioners, anything? Okay, cool. Let's move to questions then. Kimberly, what you got?
I just needed some clarification, and I apologize. Maybe I should have did better on my homework. But my understanding was the sphere of influence. So, I got a little bit confused from the letter that came in from a community member because she wants to remove some of these ag lands from the sphere of influence because she thinks that's going to protect. And my understanding is they're in the sphere of influence because they already have infrastructure and services provided. And so, does anybody... Does this make any sense to anybody why I might be confused? So...
Juan, can we have the computer back up so I can show that graphic again?
Hey, David, I want to just also honor the process, which is we were going to harvest all the questions.
Okay.
And then, dive in because there's the possibility that we'll just zoom on in and only take that one question and never get to anything else.
Appreciate that.
Okay. So, I did watch the video, so thank you for that. That was really helpful. But it still left me wondering with the other letter coming in of how we want to conserve our agricultural spaces and green spaces and whether they're in the sphere of influence, if that actually does the job. In the past, that was the intention, but then in light of, you know, the annexation or the one that didn't come to fruition that the community members pushed against, it sounds like maybe there might be another way to protect those lands. So, that's what I'm trying to clarify. And I wanted to thank you, Judith, for... And I wanted to thank you, Judith, for, I wanted to, yes, we need some kind of infrastructure policy tool of sorts would be great to have that in there. And...
Tool for what?
So she was talking about, and you probably could explain that better than I am, a tool that would help to make sure, let's see, I wrote some notes.
What's on the board up there? No, I'm not. The urban services and boundaries?
It's basically an adequate public facilities policy in the plan itself and to just be very explicit about it.
Thank you.
And that would also be another tool to make sure that we have the capacity as we annex in, to make sure we have the infrastructure to deal with that, right? Is there like, do we have anything like that to let us know, like, we need to stop now?
I think it came up, just to clarify, it came up in the context of people from the public also being a little bit freaked out that we would be extending services to an area that would be annexed and then developed demanding services. And areas within the city already where infill or further development would take place would then, you know, kind of come in second if we ever came to the point where we were drawing to, you know, the capacity of any of our infrastructure.
So you're referring to Jacoby Creek, for instance? Is that it? Pacific Union?
The example that members of the...
I'm sorry. Are you referring to like Jacoby Creek where we're providing water?
I'm not, I'm not referring to any single place in specific, but this particular freakout came out in the context of Boyd Road.
And so I want to make sure I'm understanding the question, because it went vroom for me. So I think there was something like, do we have a policy about extending services to areas? Is that right? Yes. Okay, cool.
I heard it as ensuring adequate service provision.
Ensuring adequate service. Thank you.
And I apologize, I had several questions.
Yeah, totally. Thank you. And so that's why I didn't want to jump directly into answers, and so we got them all out. What are the other ones? Kimberly, more questions?
I'm sure there will be, but that's good for now.
Other questions from council? Sweet.
So just so you know where I'm coming from, so there have been hours and hours and hours of talks and study sessions, and Alex and I have not been able to participate in any of them, so I might have a little bit more to say, possibly because I haven't had a chance.
That's cool. I might just pause you so I capture it correctly.
Sure. So I just wanted to, Judith, when you brought up like looking at the plan, general plan as a whole, and I appreciate, appreciated you bringing that up because that is something I just, it's not a question, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to comment on that because I feel like I do have some agreement with what you were saying. For me, when I was reading through it, when I looked at the four different areas, which we'll get to, I know when we go down the road, like the infill opportunity zones and such, the question that kind of popped into my head was, why would we be treating those three areas different than the gateway area plan? And I know that this has evolved, like, you know, you're all saying it's a working document, and I know the process has also been evolving. And I believe those neighborhood areas were added in like later, after Gateway was singled out. But just in looking through that, even though there might be some differences in the neighborhoods, I was really kind of struck with that they should, you know, in my opinion, be treated fairly similarly with possibly, you know, with things like form-based codes or inclusionary zoning, you know, ministerial review, all of those things that so far I've only heard, you know, when I'm listening to Gateway discussions, and I feel like those neighborhoods might need similar conversations. And then just finally on that, you know, recognizing that there are different neighborhoods, and I would assume that, you know, they would be treated somewhat differently because of different characteristics and that there would be, you know, in those neighborhoods, we have other council members that live in those. So the same assumption would go that, you know, when we would get to that part of policymaking just as we recused for our area, that there would be other recusals. So just kind of looking at, for me, thinking of things more holistically. And then when we do get to the specific areas that we might need to pull back on and recuse for whatever reasons, I totally support that. But I'm just kind of, as I read it, I was just kind of wondering about why the separation and if it still should be so separated. But what I should have said first is I was overwhelmed by the amount of attention that you all, all the detailed questions, the pages and pages and pages of suggestions and modifications and all of the discussion that I read from the planning commission, I was just really humbled by that and appreciative for the thoughtfulness of like every sentence of every page. So thank you so very much for all of that attention to detail. And I don't have any questions, I didn't have any on that specific section.
I did, I pulled them out. The question former. All right, other council members.
So I wanted to say, you know, since the very beginning, I keep thinking that we have to have, everything has to be equal in Arcata, so we just don't have the gateway that has things and that we don't have them out in Valley West or in Westwood or Sunnybury, et cetera. And I remember form-based codes were something probably maybe, maybe 15, 20 years ago, I was at a presentation on historic preservation, actually, where they were talking about form-based codes and how they could make neighborhoods and commercial areas actually work so much better. It was sort of, you know, I remember coming back to the city and it was strange, you know, strange talk at that time because no one really had seen that or understood it. And it's taken years for us finally to cut to this point of really considering what form-based codes could do and how now, I mean, you've heard a lot of hearing where people were scared of them, but I think in the overall, it offers opportunities for historic buildings, buildings next to historic buildings, et cetera, to create cohesiveness and livability and walkability. And so I want to see it everywhere. Of course, Karen reminded me, you know, you talk about you want these things not just limited, you want to see them everywhere. And I do, I don't want anything to be just in one area like the gateway, it has to be everywhere.
All right.
Just as you said. Stacy, thank you.
I want to surface other questions, and I also just want to give you a time check. This piece of work, we are anticipating about 25 minutes, it's been 25 minutes and we haven't yet heard back from commissioners yet. So sense that in our bodies about pace. Please.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick questions about annexation. So do we decide, I guess, so when we decide to annex, does it come back to the planning commission to decide, you know, how we, how we use it? So I have questions about that. And I also have questions about financial impacts of annexation. Like I remember from that presentation, there are some things that would negatively financially impact us to annex. I just wonder kind of what the financial aspect of that looks like.
Nice. Did you have more?
Nope.
Okay.
And my only question takes those questions one step further. And it might be maybe a question better asked, answered by staff, but just because talking a bit, there was conversation, I think a couple of things Judith brought up just about, and in the map that you guys showed, about the county's role, you know, within that larger planning area and then LAFCO's role. And so just as this element was created, how was kind of the discussion and any outreach or conversations with the county, you know, part of these boundaries and also with LAFCO and just kind of thinking like how much say does Arcata really have with LAFCO? Because I know that like LAFCO right now is largely made up of a lot of people from like the southern part of the county, and there's not a lot of northern Humboldt representation on LAFCO. And so just kind of like, how were they part of these conversations? And, you know, are we expecting the same things from, you know, this larger boundary and planning and all this talk of various possibilities of annexation, not necessarily that we are, you know, planning on that, but...
So to follow up on that, what was the date that LAFCO looked at our sphere of influence? And when will they be looking at it again? That was a note I had.
Okay. Alex, did you have other questions?
Well, I do know in our sphere of influence, right adjacent to our property, property of the city of Arcata's property, is that we have a piece of land that's just west of us and it's referred to as Ficus and it has the possibility for residential. And it's so, when we go to ask somebody if they want to do it, we have to go through a process, LAFCO is going to have to approve that annexation. And there's a lot of things that have to happen around an annexation.
Okay. Did we surf, yeah, another one, Kimberly. Yep.
So one of my questions was back to the vision statement. There were some things that I think fell through the cracks from vision number one to the new vision, and I'm hoping that there would be some discussion about possibly bringing them back in. And then also wondering if there, I'm sorry. Okay. I was just wondering if there will be an opportunity for the public to also weigh in on that vision statement. And then my other question was, and I realize that we are not going to be spending as much money or time necessarily as we've done with the gap on the other areas of opportunities, but will there be a budget for those areas of opportunity to do outreach and that kind of thing? And I think that was it.
Budget for other areas to do, to have those kinds of outreach conversations? Is that, okay, cool. For...
Engagement code.
Oh, thank you.
Engagement code, et cetera.
Okay. Other, okay. We got some good questions here.
And then my third question is, when is the bio break?
After this section. All right. So I just want to note, they're kind of, they're flowing here, here, and here are the questions currently. So there's this question about sphere of influence, can we clarify, will this help us conserve ag green spaces? Is there a different way to protect that land? Do we have a policy about ensuring adequate extension of services to areas? This one kind of loops over across pages, which is, hey, why would we treat these three areas differently as a whole as opposed to the way we're treating the gateway? That's how I interpreted that. This was more of a statement. This question was about annexation. When we decide to annex, does it come back to the planning commission to decide how to use it? What are the financial impacts? And then these two questions were around the role of county and LAFCO. And then these are fresher in your minds, I have no doubt, because we can really just date them. Scott?
I was just going to say, these all seem like great staff questions.
I can try to do a few quick ones. You know, I mean, I think there were two mixed thoughts that I heard tonight around sphere of influence. I think on a technical level, what we've learned is that having ag or areas that we want to conserve in our sphere of influence does not provide additional protection, and that's why we've chosen to try to shrink that and take that out. The city does even hold a conservation easement outside the city limits. We have other ways that we can work with partners on conserving lands that are outside, preferably adjacent. The one we hold currently is down by College of the Redwoods, not certainly really convenient, but it was still necessary as part of a larger project. It was good for the city. I think in terms of annexation, I mean, just in kind of a nutshell, and I don't mean to be flippant, but residential never brings monies for cities, I'm just saying in general, there are other reasons that we would want to annex residential areas to be part of our community, and certainly people want to feel part of Arcata. We've heard that when we've annexed areas like around Sunnybury that were sort of island county areas this past 15 years. You know, some sort of retail or manufacturing can bring money into cities and at least be cost neutral. But, you know, typically unless you're really generating sales tax or TOT tax, financially for the city, annexation isn't great. We do it for other reasons. And yes, all of that would come back to the planning commission, to the council. When we go through an annexation, the city ultimately needs to set a land use designation for those properties, so you'd all be seeing those many times. Start?
Do you have more to add, David?
I guess, you know, there were several questions that sort of seemed to weave together, and I think, you know, Karen hit on the majority of it, but the municipal services review, I wanted to kind of hone in on that a little bit, that identifies, you know, both our, it looks at both our urban services boundary and the sphere of influence, was last done in 2020, they're done every five years, and those were done by LAFCO. We basically accept the boundaries that they set in those two spheres. We can apply to LAFCO to amend those boundaries, but when they do their municipal services review and identify a sphere of influence, we are commenting on their process, we're not in charge of that process. So that's, you know, to the extent that the LAFCO is identifying areas within our sphere of influence, they are intending for us to identify those as areas for urban development, that those would be annexed for urban development. I want to be unequivocal on that point. They did, there were some questions about, did they, did they comment, how did they participate? Those changes that we made in our growth management element to bring those consistent with state law were specifically commented on by LAFCO staff. And so, you know, I get where we're trying to go with, like, if we have this sphere of influence, we'll be able to, you know, annex for these purposes. And under our growth management policy G4A, I believe it is, there's still a, there's still a policy that says, because we know that there are certain lands that the city of Arcata has acquired that are outside our jurisdiction, that ultimately we want to annex. The Jacoby Creek Forest is a perfect example of a, you know, area that we acquired way outside the jurisdiction that we then annexed and now have an island that's part of the city of Arcata, way removed from the city of Arcata. We have a couple more, and we want to be able to have that ability to do that when we purchase land, when it's owned by us. And then the second reflection on that, and this is the last thing I'll say on those topics, is that through the gateway area plan, and again, this is a policy that can be applied citywide, we developed a concept that we would be able to use these community benefits to help purchase conservation easements through private development so that the green belt, we can realize the green belt protections through conservation easements over time. And so that's, I think, a more effective way of providing that protection for those green belt areas.
Isn't that a method that's been used in the Arcata Forest?
To some extent, yeah. Yep.
Cool. Follow up?
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry if my head is still trying to understand whether the sphere of influence and having these ag lands in it or out of it is better. And so I guess what I'm wanting to know is the community member who wrote in said, and I guess I just want to, if you could comment on this, was they would like to have all agricultural parcels to the west and north of the city limits to be removed from the sphere of influence. And they go on to say, simply put, as per state law, a sphere of influence identifies areas for future expansion of the city. And while the GP 2020 attempted in alternate strategy to utilize the sphere to help protect these lands, the recent attempt to annex the prime agricultural lands west of the city without a protective easement is indicative of why this strategy clearly will not work in the future. And I'm wondering if there's just other reasons also to remove them from there because we don't ever intend to provide, you know, it's not going to be residential infill, we're not going to be providing urban services, so, yeah.
Yeah. So, and I think what we reported out initially is that the city did request as much shrink as possible, ultimately it's set by LAFCO, but I think the staff position is 100% in agreement with that comment. And it's why we approach LAFCO in that way, based on the comments we've heard from the public and the community around that. I know we heard a little something different from Judith tonight, and appreciate that I think a lot of us think that way, is that we want to try to be able to have that control, but we have found over the years that that's maybe not, wasn't our best strategy then. but we have found over the years that that's maybe not, wasn't our best strategy then. So I can pick off one more quickly if you want.
Please do.
Can I just ask a quick clarifying question, Karen? Because I think this is what you stated, and I just want to make sure, because we don't really have a say over exactly what LAFCO decides. I mean, we can influence them and ask them for what we want, but ultimately, once they create this sphere of influence, that was LAFCO's decision, right? Okay. Thank you.
You were going to pick off another question.
Yeah, it was just kind of mentioned around policies on the extension or on infrastructure. We do, I mean, just by, for reference for the community, we do have state laws that require us to review our capacity of both wastewater. We have an urban water management plan that we do every five years, looking at current use and looking at future use. And then we do every year track dry weather flow within our wastewater treatment plant to be tracking that. So we are carefully tracking the capacity of those base infrastructures. Having a policy around that is certainly fine. It's just a natural part of what we do as operations of a city every year. And I think a commenter, or somebody asked a question around, you know, if you annex areas, or even if you don't, we don't actually choose who develops first. It comes, you know, based on those private developments. So it's absolutely true, if we annexed in an area that we thought was actually really ready for development, that certainly could beat certain people to levels of infrastructure. I don't see, say, water and sewer being real limiting factors right now. Fortunately, in this area, anything can happen with our water world, of course. But right now, those aren't our most limiting factors up here.
And I'll just add to that, that policy GM4A does identify municipal services, sewer and water, and other municipal services as being part of the analysis that we have to do, not related to CEQA, but part of the analysis we have to do to identify whether or not we would move forward with the annexation. And I think that, you know, it'd be, you know, perfectly legitimate to add to that, that, you know, to emphasize that we want to make sure that we have that capacity. I mean, basically, if we don't have the capacity and someone wants to annex, they have to build the capacity. That's basically how it works. So I don't think there's any harm in, you know, sort of doubling down on that statement and, you know, emphasizing that capacity has to be there for annexation.
Okay. Follow up, clarification?
Yeah, just clarification. So there would be no jeopardy of, say, they beat us to the punt, or, you know, somebody beats to the punch, and then we can't fulfill obligations or not obligations, our wishes, desires in the Gateway Area Plan? You know, so, no.
No, I think that what the, what the annexation reports have to demonstrate is, you know, given the other prior commitments and these additional commitments, that you would meet all of the municipal services' needs.
So wouldn't be he who gets their first wins?
I mean, no. And when they do get their first, they pay their capital connection fees, and they're paying forward into the infrastructure that we need, you know, for those additional projects. And that is true of both annexations and developments that are happening within the city limits.
Thank you.
Cool. All right. Other questions that anybody wants to pick up? I know that this one was like really about, I think it's building off of what you're offering about, like, the general plan as a whole, and why are we treating certain areas, like these three areas, different? I see many people, you want to go here, and then we'll go over here?
You know, I was getting that too, and that's actually come up with the Planning Commission. And I think that, you know, staff has basically emphasized to us that the gateway is the first of the opportunity zones that we're dealing with. And I think that's one of the reasons why it's been so agonizing, because, you know, we haven't done it before. But, you know, at some point, there's going to be a debate about, well, do we use the same standards, the same pattern, the same kinds of approaches with the other three opportunity zones? Or do we recognize each of their uniqueness and do them sort of one by one so that each area has its own area-specific form-based code with its own area-specific benefits? And, you know, to really recognize that uniqueness? We haven't decided that yet, have we?
I don't think all those final decisions have been made. I mean, I feel like staff needs to reconsider what we've heard this evening. And I really just don't want to get ahead of ourselves. We've only heard from a couple of council members and one planning commissioner. There are two separate areas around gateway, and not to talk about that a lot, although we have to here to recuse that in detail. But, you know, there is the policy side of it, and then there is the form-based code. I do think that each of those infill areas could have their own form-based code, and that could reflect that unique character of that region. The question I think that, or what I heard, starting with you tonight, you know, that was reiterated then, is that there may be interest in looking at larger policies that... I mean, I'm not going to eliminate the gateway plan, right? Because that seems too extreme, and please don't panic everyone out there, right? You know, but if, but that is sort of the conversation that I feel like was opened with that, with that concept, of that these are policies that are good citywide. And is that something, I have no idea if that's something that the council would want to revisit.
It's something I would like to, I would personally like to visit, because I think that we need to treat everything and look at all those possibilities throughout the whole city and not just relegate it to one section of town.
Okay. Right.
Well, I suggest we put a pin in that one, and let's do some analysis before we send shockwaves, please.
I will actually draw a pin. There are two additional questions here. I wonder if we could pick them up quick before we go to a break. Vision statement, and maybe it's just like, just a general pulse check around that. There was that, again, something that Judith opened with, and then Kimberly built on, which was like, this vision statement, it got dropped, can we bring it back in? And could the public have a chance to chime in?
Can I just address that real quick? The vision statement is in its own separate element. Right now, we've got the elements listed individually. We haven't packaged the whole general plan together. And so we can fix that, because the Planning Commission did make a vote on a vision statement. Commissioner Mayor is absolutely correct. It was confusing. Our staff report wasn't clear. There was some confusion about the motion. Ultimately, the confusion was cleared up, and I believe that the, and commissioners can speak, those who were involved anyway can speak for, to this, but I believe that they understood what they ultimately were adopting, and it was just an oversight on our part that we didn't post it along with the other elements, because it's not technically an element. It's part of the format or kind of like, you know, the table of contents and the, you know, cover, but obviously a lot more important than those. But it just is in its own section. So we'll get that uploaded.
Okay. And then budget for additional outreach to other areas?
We have a whole nother item coming up on this agenda to talk about budget for these kinds of activities.
Okay.
And the answer is yes. There needs to be a budget.
And no, there's not one right now.
Okay. Follow up?
Yeah. Sorry, needing clarification. So did everybody agree then that the new vision statement is good to go and that there's nothing to add or change? I'm not sure.
Yeah, there was a right...
For the planning commissioners, could you weigh in on that?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I think we came up against this sort of missing piece and talked through it as a group, and I think it came back to staff to fix, and staff was just going to bring it back as we continued working on this piece. But I don't think it was a, I wouldn't characterize it as a stumbling block at all in that meeting once we kind of talked through and got to a place of agreement about it.
I think the vision statement is one of the things that suffered from extreme time pressure, where, you know, we had two very different vision statements in front of us. Some of us had provided detailed input on the old vision statement in terms of how to update it so that it reflected better values of equity and stuff like that. And those of us who did that had made no comments on the completely new vision statement, which had not been developed within the Planning Commission, that I think one person majority vote actually ended up putting in there. And then we were in a hurry, so we really couldn't come back to it. And I think that this is definitely something that both the Planning Commission and the City Council should spend some time on, and the public should have opportunities to weigh in as well. This is the overarching picture for the entire plan, and it's not something that should be done as an afterthought.
So I don't know, because this isn't a decision-making meeting. I guess I just noted here, like, one direction was, it could be added in as it was approved, and it sounds like it could be revisited to check to see, commissioners, do you like this? Is this still good? And I'm hearing a proposal, like, and obviously the council should look at it too and see if there's revisions. And I was also hearing advocacy for the public to have a chance to chime in. So I think at this moment in time, I can note all of those things, so you can decide what you want to do with them after.
Yeah, and so noted, we certainly assumed that the City Council was going to look at this with everything that we recommended up, so I don't see that as being different in any way.
Cool.
And I would also say there's been opportunities for the public to weigh in on all these discussions, and will continue for sure.
Okay.
I'm just asking, is this vision statement, is that outside the whole growth management piece? I mean, is that something that we can consider separately?
Yeah.
Growth management?
Yeah, the vision statement in our current general plan is at the very beginning, is kind of like, you know, setting the stage, and then each of the elements follows it.
Cool. Do we feel complete enough? All right. I'm sensing a five-minute break could be really helpful right now, and then we'll come back. I'll look at the timing again to see what's realistic.
Let's really start at five minutes.
Five minutes.
I know, I need to run around the mic.
Okay, folks. We're back for land use. Hip hip hooray for land use. All right. We, I just did a quick readjustment of time. We could still cover everything if we try to keep things, this piece of work to about 30 minutes, and then the next piece of work to about 30 minutes. Okay? So we'll see. Obviously, we don't want to rush things and then compromise the content and the quality of the conversation. We're not interested in that, but we are interested in seeing, can we be like, succinct, clear? I don't know if that came through on Zoom. But, so, presentation first, comments from commissioners. I'll take all the questions, and then we'll see how we want to respond to all the questions. Who's presenting this time? David?
Yeah, I am, and I'm going to be very...
Excellent.
What I want to say about the land use element is that, excuse me, it's kind of leaning in and implementing what the... in and implementing what the growth management element set out as sort of a framework. And so, the growth management establishes a lot of policies that look at how do we, you know, concentrate within the city's boundaries? How do we do infill? And the land use element kind of lays out the framework for how to actually do that. I did discuss this in the video as well, but I just want to bring to your attention that we kind of do this in two ways, in particular with regards to housing. One is by increasing the density allowable in each of the zoning districts. We've upped the maximum density in residential medium from 15 to 25, and we've upped the maximum density in residential high from 32 to 50. There aren't a whole lot of new residential high-density zoning districts that were created, and there's not a lot of opportunity in most of those areas. But there are considerable new residential medium-density properties added to the city that have, you know, a lot of vacancy, and so that's a potential area for growth there. We've relied primarily on state law, in particular with accessory dwelling units on the lower densities, residential low, residential very low, to increase densities throughout the city in this way, in ways that don't have dramatic changes to the community. The second way that we've done this is by, excuse me, changing the commercial zoning districts to commercial mixed-use. Currently, all the commercial zoning districts do allow residential uses, but there are several restrictions on them that make it so that it's really infeasible in a lot of situations. And so the Planning Commission made a recommendation to change all of the commercial zoning districts that are not within the central core, the commercial central, to commercial mixed-use, indicating that we are really looking for mixed-use there. And there have been a lot of conversations at the Planning Commission level, at the community level, about making commercial mixed-use more flexible, so that you don't necessarily have to have a commercial component in every situation. That will facilitate housing development. And then the maximum density in those commercial mixed uses would be at 50, the same as residential high density. And so, two strategies, increasing density in residential districts, the second strategy being creating more flexibility in commercial districts, and increasing density in those districts as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, I see you coming forward.
Yeah, I think this piece really just felt like where we would, sort of went through and filled in the blanks, and looked at the town, you know, looked at Arcata, sort of section by section, and increased density where we could, as David said. I think the change to commercial mixed, also, that was a place where we had, you know, unanimous agreement, simplify the amount of kind of zoning types, and it was more aligned with housing construction. So, I feel like that piece kind of stands on its own.
Thank you. Others, other commissioners? Dan?
I'll just reiterate that the change from commercial general to commercial mixed seems super obvious to all of us, as I recall, and it feels like what I experience in a lot of other urban and small-town settings, where they're doing these kind of developments in the core, and, I don't know, I just can't imagine anything wrong with it. I'd love to think that some of that could flush out in some of our outlying areas, and yep.
Awesome. Thanks. Yeah. Abby?
So in our last Planning Commission meeting, there was a brief discussion when we made the motion to accept the changes in the commercial zoning or land use designations, but I was wondering how many other land use designations allow gas sales, and to what extent have we thought about limiting gas sales in certain areas in support of our Gateway Plan efforts, but also just in general for the general plan? Thanks.
All right. So, I recognize that was a question from a commissioner to other commissioners. I hadn't factored that part in. All right. Were you going to offer a point?
Yeah, I guess the big message, I think, for, you know, the City Council from the Planning Commission on this is that the devils are all in the details which happen in the land use code. And so, you know, that's going to be our next job, right? And that's also probably where, you know, Planning Commission and City Council is going to take the flak from the public when, you know, changes that seem really simple will affect people's lives. And, you know, we should all be ready for that, because it's going to happen. It's going to happen with regard to limiting parking. We're going to have to think about not only just limiting, getting rid of minimum parking requirements, but thinking about maximum parking requirements, which may really freak people out. And, you know, I don't, there are a number of things that could easily be streamlined to the point, made ministerial to the point, where we're missing some of the values that our general plan should really reinforce. There are ways, for example, for a mixed-use residential-commercial area to become pretty unlivable when the residential values may fall victim to the commercial profit margins of both businesses in there and the developers themselves. And so, we're going to have a challenge of trying to figure out how to create livable places, not just profitable ones. But again, you know, if nobody's coming in to build, we don't get the housing. So, that's a tough balancing point. It seems in the language of this draft, I don't know, when I was going through it this time, it really struck me that the staff draft seems to be aiming toward veering away from the use of planned development overlays. I don't know if that is a misinterpretation, when in fact, that's actually a tool that the city has had in the past to really, really promote orderly, predictable development, especially on larger projects and larger sites. And the push to get streamlined ministerial approvals could easily throw out some of the values that we've achieved in the past through planned development. That's where the form-based codes are going to come in. But I would really push for, you know, large sites. If there is a project on a large site, even if it involves stage development, for some means of requiring a plan for the entire site rather than piecemeal approval of projects in one corner or another, to avoid the kind of surprises that we've had where, you know, people in rental housing suddenly find that they're going to have construction right outside their window, they're going to lose their green space and air, oh, and incidentally, there's very little rent protection control except for from the state level. So, and I think, you know, the other thing that's going to hit us are these issues of, what do we do with large-scale retail in these mixed-use commercial areas? When we also want to promote residential. In the past, we've had sort of a threshold for a use permit at 30,000 square feet to keep big-box stores out. And Arcata has really taken a hit in terms of tax revenue on account of those policies. Also, you can't buy children's underwear in town. But on the other hand, if we're going to try to create livable residential spaces, we're also going to need to somehow figure out the balances that are appropriate in these mixed-use zones, and they are probably going to be largely in our infill opportunity zones. So, yeah, that's going to be something that will probably need to happen after the general plan is adopted, as the land use code is amended, probably incrementally, because I don't think we're going to want to wait to do all those opportunity zones at once with this land use code, but we don't know, do we? We know yet.
I did my best to capture at least, like, bullet points around all those. Did you have more?
You know, I should probably let someone else talk, except that I did want to remind everyone that when we say we have a mixed-use zone with a maximum residential density of 50 units per acre, with the density bonuses that the state is imposing, that's 90 units per acre, plus the commercial development. So we need to kind of keep that in mind.
Other commissioners?
I'll follow on briefly on something Judith said at the beginning. Judith said flak, more flak is probably right. And I think there's just an awareness that, as Judith said, these changes are going to have to impact some people across town, all of us really, especially people living in some of the downtown or denser parts of Arcata. But I also think there's an awareness alongside of that, that we can't do the strategic infill and increase the density in the ways that we want to without those impacts. So, being aware and empathetic to those changes, but not letting them hold hostage the work of creating the housing that we all realize we need.
Any other points from commissioners before we get questions? You can still talk, even though I'm still writing. It's cool.
Ready for questions.
All right, cool. Questions? Who wants to go first?
So, I guess, well, this is a comment and a question. I know several residents who are being affected by the piecemeal with noise, construction, and then inevitable rent increases. And then I guess my other question is, how do you, you know, not everybody knows what they want or what they can afford in the future. And so, I think it's really important that we don't piecemeal, but I guess that's the quandary of, you know, we have several projects recently that speak to that, and that became an issue. So, I agree with Judith in that we need to look at that. And I am concerned about what the scaling versus, you know, in commercial and residence, and what that looks like for bike and pedestrian safety, when you have all of this stores, businesses, industry, and how we can somehow balance that and still keep that safe for the folks that live there, as Judith said, make it livable for them as well. I kind of get a little bit of that, just living in the area that I live, because it has a lot of commercial and franchises, and we do have also residential, and then we have more to come, which I'm super excited. I think the property next to the Hampton Inn at one point was going to be office and residential. I think that, and I could be wrong, that it might be just residential, which is, we need more residential for sure. But yeah, I guess that's the balance. I mean, right now, I won't let my daughter really ride her bike out there, because it's big trucks and delivery and kind of gets sketchy out there. So, that's just something I'm thinking about.
So I got, I got this piecemeal project, it causes noises, it causes disturbances, how can we best deal with this? And then I got regarding scaling and density, what does this mean for pedestrians, bikes, people living there? How are you going to ensure neighborhoods are livable? Is that right?
Oh, and parking, because they will be competing with the commercial businesses also for parking. And what do you do? Levitate your car or park six blocks away and with your groceries and your children in tow?
Thank you for that clarification. All right. Other questions?
I just wanted to ask a question. Do we still have an ordinance about big-box stores? And do we still have something about franchise, you know, food places?
Okay.
Do we still have limits on those?
Except for not in Valley West.
I don't believe that's true.
No, there's no cap anymore, is my understanding, in Valley West.
Cap citywide.
Yeah, citywide, but we could conceivably put them all in Valley West if it worked out that way.
Or we could put them all in the downtown, if we had vacancies wherever.
Questions online?
So, you said, yes, we have the franchise and we have big-box stores, limitations.
If it's a complicated question, I would say we just add it to the list and we pick them up all at once.
You just curious?
No, it's a fair question, and I thought it was going to be fast, but it sounds like it's not.
Yes, and you should.
All right, well, that was my question. I just did have a question about big-box stores and what that looks like, and if it had to go before the Planning Commission, and if, because I would definitely like to see that go out for, like, some public engagement before we put big-box stores. I know Arcata is very committed to local, small businesses, so just putting that out there. And also, to take Kibberly's point, I think, a little bit further about bike and pedestrian safety. When we, you know, do infill, like, for example, in North Town, will we also have the possibility to maybe, like, take G or H down to one lane to make it, the bike lanes and sidewalks wider for safer transportation?
Cool. What else? What are the other questions?
I was going to ask kind of like a go-around, everybody, tell us how you feel. No, but just kind of thinking about when Scott and Judith were kind of talking about some of these uses that we're looking at, you know, moving away from or adding, and so just kind of what particular land uses were the commissioners looking at limiting, and kind of what were the priorities for that and why? And thinking about, you know, parking with that, or I think of things like, you were talking, asking questions about gas, and I think we talk about storage units a lot, things like that. And then just a kind of clarifying question, is the land use code that will be adopted with the general plan pushing to have ministerial review at this point? And just to add kind of to that idea, I think it's interesting, it's the topic that Judith brought up about larger sites having kind of a planned development or a master plan. We've talked about it with the Beryl District, with the Gateway. It's a huge point, you know, in the county right now with the McKinleyville Town Center, and so kind of thinking about how do we deal with these much larger parcels that do have the potential to both generate a lot of housing and a lot of commercial center use? And then, this is more of a comment, not a question, but again, as we're talking through this element, you know, we kind of see this glimmer that kind of Alex and Stacy brought up earlier, just about, you know, that exists in the Gateway Plan, right? These glimmers of, you know, do we want a form-based code with this? Do we need a master plan for this site like we would for the Beryl District? Are we creating, you know, infill that's close to transportation so we can, you know, work to have better pedestrian and bike safety and, you know, get away from the confines of parking minimums and all of that? So, just, you know, thinking about that as we're talking about these land use designations.
Stacy, questions?
I have a simple question and then just a couple comments. The question is, will our local coastal plan be completed like around the same time as our general plan? We've been talking about that, so just kind of wondering that. And then, as I spent quite a bit of time with staff prior to this, answering the small questions, so I don't have those, but I think it's also important to know, like, overall, like, how we feel about things, right? Like, the positive things, and I have a lot of positive things. So, one, well, just to point something out, like, the theme throughout this is to create, like, small city or activity centers, like, places that are already currently heading in that direction and build on that, and, which I appreciate, because that is, you know, for lots of reasons that we know that's a healthy way to build a city, but just want to point out that, you know, there will be people. But I just want to point out that, you know, there will be people that are more upset in those areas than other areas. You know, I live in one of those areas and I get it, but I don't know if I would get it if I wasn't on council, right? Learning about it all the time. So it's not necessarily going to be equitable across the whole city, because we are trying to develop those areas that are already on the way there. So I, but even though it might be hard for some of us that live in those areas, I do, I agree with that as a healthy way to develop. And then also, just what really struck, kind of stuck out to me between the land, the pa, sorry, the chart that shows the percentages of our land use and kind of our overall development patterns, well, it's pretty great and also pretty cohesive. If you look at that table, between like ag-exclusive and natural resources, there's 53% of Arcata is in there, which I think is really upholds what our people want, which is great. However, if we want to keep that, it does tie into other things. So if you look at the objectives, I was reading through them and I was like, yeah, protection of natural resources and ag lands, yeah, absolutely. Promotion of infill development, you know, people are struggling with that one. Prioritization of transit and active transportation, yes. State mandated housing, removing some of our control, already happening. You can't really, in the way I see it and what I've been taught, you can't really get all of those things without the infill. And so I just kind of, that really stuck out to me, and I feel like it really sticks out here, and I just want to kind of point that out to make sure that people are seeing it that way, the way I'm seeing it. And I think that's all.
Awesome.
So I have one thing. I'm just curious about commercial and any new development, the amount of commercial that's required compared to residential. And I know that we've had projects that haven't been built because of the commercial component in the past, the lot's still vacant. And I'm just wondering how that ratio works, or is it required or not required?
Yeah, thank you. All right, did we get all the questions? Apologies. Okay. I moved that page down because those were more points as I was hearing them, and I think that the questions are spanning these two pages. Does anybody need me to recap them before response? Great, let's hear responses.
I think there's areas where having sort of a, some kind of master plan for a project or a piece of property makes sense, like looking at the Beryl District and trying to make sure that there's a cohesive plan for it. I will say that there have been some projects that have come before us where the owner has shared development goals for a portion of it, but kept part of it off knowing that there was going to be zoning changes. And I think there was a little disagreement at the planning commission. Some people felt that we should have the whole story right up front, whereas I think in situations like that, it can be tricky when they're waiting for some zoning changes. So I think looking at projects maybe based on size and location makes sense in some areas, but not always.
So you're saying that once we rezone, people with large projects now would have more impetus to put the whole plan at once because the zoning has been changed?
I think that's definitely true in certain areas, but I think there's people that own land currently that have some development goals that have come before the planning commission based on current zoning, and then they've kept part of their property out of that plan anticipating zoning changes. And so it's difficult then to present an entire plan when part of it is based on future changes, so.
Can I also just distinguish between a master plan and a PD, excuse me? And I also want to emphasize that this is not a staff draft, this is the PC recommended draft that you're reviewing, but it has discussed making some changes to the plan development permitting process, which was historically designed to help identify residential uses on greater than an acre. There are problems that we've encountered implementing this over the last 20 years, and so we're not proposing to eliminate the plan development permit. It is still a good tool, but change the way that it functions. Oftentimes when a property owner who owns a very large lot comes forward, they're looking to do a phased development, and they're concentrating on the phases that they can afford to finance at the time when they're ready to do the development. Master planning does help with a very large area such as the Beryl District to try and come up with a cohesive concept around the way that a project would develop. It's similar to what you do with a subdivision process where you establish where the roads are going to be, so that you're not just like a road out to nowhere and then we'll figure it out later. So there's definitely, you know, utility in that. And I do think that we, for some of these large sites, will be able to use that process, but it's not, a master planning process is not a regulatory process. So I just wanted to try and draw the, you know, disambiguate between those two terms and recognize that they do sometimes have utility depending on the site, and they don't overlap. Yeah, I think that's important to note.
Anybody want to pick up this point about piecemeal projects that cause noise, disturbances, et cetera, and how might we deal with this? Yeah, Dan?
How could we possibly deal with it? Construction is noisy, you know, it just is what it is. And if, as David just described, somebody just phases a project because of finances, who are we to say, nope, sorry, you got to do the whole thing at once, five days a week? It just doesn't seem realistic to try to limit noise beyond the codes that are already on the books about eight o'clock starting times or whatever they are, you know, stuff like that.
Could I just clarify when I said I didn't think that they needed to do the whole project at a time, but that there would be a plan so that if I decide to move to this particular area, I know ahead of time that there's going to be construction, and then I can make my decision accordingly, and knowing that with that usually comes rent hikes, I might make a different decision if I had all of the information ahead of time.
Is there a response beyond what's been offered already?
I think it's nice to be able to have as much information as possible, but given the fact that we're just changing zoning and then developers will come in and do projects, I think it's impossible to be able to offer people in a neighborhood who already live there or who are planning to move there, a clear picture of what the future is going to be like with construction. I agree with Dan, you know, construction clearly just is noisy and disruptive.
But any potential resident could go downtown and talk to the development staff and find out what the possibilities are, what heights are even possible, what are the opportunities, commercial, light residential, all that stuff is totally available and will be shared to any public, right, that walks across.
Judith, you were going to add? Oh, will you do your mic, please? Thank you so much.
I guess I'm bringing that up in terms of, you know, contrasting. It comes up especially for projects that don't possibly involve land subdivision. Our subdivision regulations do require site plans if the project is involving subdivisions and if it's big enough to trigger those requirements. So if you have a project that doesn't involve land subdivision, largely a rental housing project, for example, it doesn't trigger that requirement to have a total site plan for the entire parcel. In fact, right now, I don't think there's anything in our code that does require that, and frankly, it should. And so, you know, I think that's a debate that we're probably going to end up having when we work on the land use code, and it's probably going to slop over to the city council. It's going to be a significant one, because it will be something that is calling on developers to put their best foot forward. You can always amend a plan or a permit once it's approved, but I think that developers should be expected to tell the people that are going to be renting from them, but also the neighbors, what they can expect on a piece of land that will affect them. And that's what orderly planning is about. That's why we do planning. So that's kind of why I brought it up, because we don't really treat it adequately. We do have requirements in this land use element that would kick in the master plan, I think at, what is it, at five acres? And that say things like, you can't have a street without, I can't remember what it was, because I don't have the document in front of me, but you could conceivably have a very, very long extent between streets or crosswalks. And it was, I felt like that was written by maybe someone who hadn't actually been to Arcata, it was over 1,000 feet. Do you recall where that is?
Yeah, I think the maximum block length was longer than our typical block length for the Beryl District.
Yeah, it was four times as long. And I didn't notice that the first time I read the draft. I did when I read it this time, and I said, what? And so that's one of the things that we probably need to think through, and it may be also something that ends up with the council to decide, so.
All right.
I guess I was just thinking, you know, people who are renters, so for example, a family with many children moved into a place, and then the development happened and they lost the reason that they moved there, which was for the community gardens and the playground. And we all know that moving is probably one of the second or, you know, the top stressors in one's life, and now they have to pick up with a brand-new baby and children and go find a place that has a playground and community gardens, but as we all know, they don't really exist here, everything's taken up. But they made their decision to move there because that was an amenity that was there, and unbeknownst to them, it was a piecemeal, and they were removed, you know, not the people, but those amenities, so, yeah.
I think we understand the challenge, and I'm hearing also the challenge of how you want to, how you could potentially grapple with that through a code. I know there's other questions, and I will have a process question for everybody, but I noticed Dan was at the mic, so let's hear it.
I just wonder if I can jump over to this other page and take a shot at the top question.
Yeah, I just want to, before we do that, I just want to say, so that was 40 minutes, and so there's still many more questions here, and so I just want to check the temperature of the group, because it feels like we can continue to answer these questions. I imagine you're not going to actually have time to do, unless you choose to stay later than you had anticipated, the third topic, given the pace of the evening. So are we okay? So if you want to actually tackle the next one, we kind of have to shift to another topic and leave these open questions right now. So that's an option A, or option B is like, answer these questions.
I think some of them are quick questions, right? If there's some that can be answered, just like with quick yes or no answers, like Stacy's question, we can maybe get to those.
So stay with the questions, is the proposal.
So are we okay with skipping the health element? Is that what?
It might come down to that. I want to just check, do we want to keep with these questions?
I mean, I'll put it out to the group. I mean, I think there's a couple of quick questions that can be answered here, but I see that maybe we're able to move along in under 10 minutes here and get to the health element.
All right, I will set my timer for 10 minutes. Let's see what we can do with our remaining questions.
All right, I was just going to throw out that in my opinion, that top-left question, is the land use code pushing for ministerial review? I hope yes. We've talked so much through the planning commission about expediting the permit process, and if we do our homework with form-based code and all the other amenities that we're trying to include in projects, I hope we can continue to push towards ministerial review.
All right.
And I'll just add to that, oh, go ahead, Scott. I was just going to say, agreed, you know, it'll help us avoid problems that have plagued development in the past.
And for housing projects, I mean, we have to keep in mind that this is the direction the state is pushing us. We're doing this work now so that we, as a community, can have input into what housing projects look like. We're doing this master planning at the zoning level so that people can have an understanding of what the community might look like in the future. And then to Stacy's question, the local coastal program, there are many areas within the city that are inside the coastal zone that are being affected by this planning work that you're doing that we'll have to go back and get a local coastal program update for to certify. But the current work that we're doing in the local coastal program is almost in parity, so depending on the timeline for that work, it's possible that we have, you know, a major amendment with the work that we've done to date and the few items that are pending, and then come back for minor amendments to update based on the work that you're doing now. Kind of depends on how long it takes to get through this process.
Okay. Commercial, what's the ratio requirement between commercial and residential?
The conversation that we've been having, again, with the community and the council of the commission, is to reduce or potentially even eliminate the commercial requirements in these mixed-use zones, to allow the market to identify when more commercial is needed. We already have an overabundance of commercial in the city of Arcata, and currently some of the requirements do kill projects, as Councilmember Stillman pointed out.
Thank you. What land uses were you considering limiting and why? For example, gas storage. Who wants to pick that one up? Yes! Glad to hear your voice.
I think at our last commission meeting, we, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the sentiment of the commission was to eliminate gas stations or prohibit any new gas stations in the city. Storage, I think, is going to be, continue to be promoted in the Gateway as a non-conforming use. I don't know that we, we haven't really talked about storage otherwise in the city. Let's see, there's another one. Oh, on scaling density, what does it mean for pedestrians and bikes? At least in the Gateway, which we spent a lot of time on, we spent a fair amount of effort in talking about pedestrian safety. I think the commission as a whole wants to promote bikes, bike lanes, and we're in favor of, fellow commissioners can correct me if I'm wrong, but in favor of discouraging reliance on automobiles and promoting uses of bikes, public transit, and alternative modes of transportation. And we spent a lot of time, a fair amount of time, talking about that issue.
Thank you. Any other commissioners want to pick up this piece around, and what about parking for residents?
I think we eliminated mandatory parking, minimum parking requirement in the Gateway, and personally, as much, well, I personally am in favor of limiting parking as much as possible, and I support Collins' comments about metered, promoting metered parking in the city. I know that's probably a controversial issue among certain of the commercial uses, and I've heard mixed reports of what business owners think would be best in the city, but I think it's something worth considering.
Other commissioners, yeah?
I agree that the idea of parking meters is a good idea, and I think that limiting parking helps, of course, support better transportation, but parking has just so often been used as a bludgeon to stop housing. And it's interesting to note that some of this is not so much an actual problem as a sort of perception problem. You may have someone who is, feels like, oh my gosh, I've had to park, you know, four blocks away, five blocks away from the restaurant. But if you go to the mall, you fully expect to walk a quarter of a mile from your car to get where you're going. And so I think there's a lot we could do to decrease vehicle miles traveled in the city by addressing parking. And I think metered parking is a good idea.
Thank you. Any commissioners want to pick up this question about possibility to take G and H down to one lane for safety reasons?
I would offer that we probably shouldn't make decisions about specific bike and pedestrian improvements, but I think that, you know, those kinds of ideas are on the table. And I, yeah, this is probably the wrong forum to make that big a decision.
Well, we all agree, as has been noted, that anything we can do to get people walking more, riding more, parking less, driving less, you know, that fits in. So who knows what's going to happen with G and H, but.
And then it sounded like this was more of a complicated answer than was originally noted, but still, there's an ordinance around big-box stores and franchises, and it goes before the Planning Commission.
I think we address that one, yeah.
So, yes. All right, cool. All right. We did it. Woo-hoo. Okay. So shifting gears, I do have to move some paper. We're going to dive into health element. Let's see if we can do it. Who's going to do a quick presentation?
I am going to be real brief on this. Jen and I are going to start this one. I'll just say that, you know, this element, we were really excited to share it. It's a new element. We did it in partnership with NorCal for Health, which is an agency that is focused on health and in particular, smoking cessation in the northern counties, Mendocino, Trinity, I'm sorry, Mendocino, Lake, Humboldt, and Del Norte. And that policy is also an area where we were able to focus real consciously on, you know, improving Arcata's lives and social justice and racial equity. And so.
And so David asked me to pick three, and I think that was just a ridiculous request. So I'm going to give you the three that I picked that really identified this. And I would say the health equity, which is H1C, which is strive for health and equity by identifying and reducing barriers to health faced, health faced disproportionately by vulnerable groups. And it goes on to kind of talk about some of those. But I think that that's something that we found, that came out with the 2018 Humboldt County Health Assessment. And so I think it's really important to focus on that and identify that. And I know that, you know, there's only so much we can do as a city as far as that's concerned. But continuing to support Open Door and United Indian Health Services and Mad River and all of the services that we have related to, related to health and making sure that we have health equity is one of the top ones for me, anyway. The next one that I picked was H3D, which is Community Consciousness of Racial Equity. And I think encouraging community dialogue around historic and current systems of advantage and exclusion is extremely important. I know that this one, it kind of goes, again, goes on to talk a little bit more there, but while it's aspirational, I really think it's important to clearly state our desire and make our community equitable in all aspects. And I really think that having that listed there and focusing on housing, health, and education are really highlighting things that I think would be helpful. And then the last one that I picked, because I only got to pick three and we're running out of time, was, I actually have two more, but I won't go into them, is H4C, which is Health in All Policies. And I think that's something that our department and the Planning Commission and, has been really, really committed to as far as making sure that we look at and address existing inequities in city policies. I know our department has been looking at a fair housing plan, which is really needed and is something that we're going to, we're going to need to put into place at some point. I think we just have to view all of our policies with an equity lens in order to have a meaningful impact, and that's across the board. So I really felt like that having that in there, just continuing to build that trust and engage residents who face disproportionate barriers in policy decisions will go a long way to, to improving the outcomes that we have for those health disparities. So those are my three.
And I'll disclose by apologizing first off that I didn't let you pick them all. And also noting that the structure of the element, as you look at it, there's going to be a new health element, but there were also implementation measures and policies that we felt fit better in other existing elements. So when you look through it, you'll see the policies and implementation measures at the very end are identified to be put into like public safety or land use and so on and so forth. So I just wanted that to be clear is that the health element, as it's currently presented, also has policies that we plan to put in other areas, but we wanted to keep them all together so you can see them in one place.
Thank you.
H1C, Health Equity.
Awesome. Commissioners, any bullet points you want to offer? Context, rationale? Yeah, Judith.
Will you use your mic there? But I did that without the mic on, so, oh, well. So yeah, Jen's point about supporting our existing health care system is the thing that I really wanted to focus on. The health element that we got was really strong in terms of healthy lifestyles and equity. But it, at least in the initial draft, before the Planning Commission took a whack at it, it treated health care almost as an afterthought. And we reviewed this before the announcement that Mad River Hospital was going to be sold. And right now, I just am really hoping to have policy, city action plans that will really focus on retaining the health care services and access, and improving access to them in what could become a fairly desperate situation fairly quickly in the face of new ownership, which is quite likely to deal with our community hospital by cutting services and by engaging in some potentially reprehensible labor practices. So, you know, I, I'm scared. You know, I, I gave birth in that hospital, you know, we've had family surgeries in that A town without a hospital, a town where significant numbers of people have to travel long distances for health care becomes an unlivable community. That's not who we want to be. So city councils, magic is necessary and required.
So I'm hearing you really amped that portion of the, this element up.
And there actually is a policy that's very specific to that, which I think was added. So that's H1E, which is retain existing health care institutions and resources located in Arcata. So yeah, very specific to that, that desire.
Other commissioners, bullet points? Okay.
Questions first, sorry.
Okay. Questions? What are the questions from council?
There, this is really minor, but on the second page in the fourth paragraph, there's just a typo because, you know, it says metal health, not mental health. Now. Quiet, Riot might disagree with me, but I'm saying I think it's supposed to be mental. And then just, I just wanted to say yes to many things that I read in there. Since this is a new element, I just wrote, "Health care lacking, housing will help that." I mean, there's only so much we can control in that system. So obviously, we need to do what we can for the things we can control. Public transportation by establishments that serve alcohol, that was great, not sure what, how the bus drivers will feel. Work with partners to reduce substance abuse and overdose deaths, absolutely. Transparency in government, yes. Food security, yes. Health in all policies in each section was great also. So thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I don't have a question, but I am going to make a comment. I think a lot of us aren't going to have too many questions. It's a new one, but this whole element really does bring a lot of great things forward that, you know, we are lacking in the community. Like Judith was saying, this importance to support our existing health care system and also incentivize and, you know, move towards creating even more opportunity for health care, which is so intersectional with creating housing and having a strong job market and being able to attract people to this area, both who do and don't work in the health care industry, to be able to kind of bolster that. And so I just, you know, I'm excited to see the pieces of this element and how they kind of bring together these important ideas, both surrounding health care and just physical and mental health of a person, and how that relates to our community and livability and to housing. And I think it kind of, it's a good thing to have at the end of our evening, too, because it kind of wraps it all together and puts it in perspective. So again, thank you, Commissioner, for your work on the health element and staff and all that.
Questions? Or Alex?
No, I didn't have a question.
Comments? I think we're going in the right.
So what I was going to say, I think with the new focus that they have on behavioral health that will be located out at Mad River Hospital, that they're already looking at an architect for that design. I think that will make a big difference for our services as far as in our community of homelessness, et cetera, because it'll act also as a triage center. So you'll be able to get services and find out, you know, I think it'll be really beneficial.
Nice. Thank you.
And I'm glad that we see the health care being coming more and more important all the time, just like we have with the internet, wireless, and that it's another section that's, we know how we've suffered over health care and what it's like not to be able to find your medical services here. I mean, I know that from the 70s.
Yeah. Other council members? Were there questions?
I just wanted to thank Jen for making health equity her number one. And I wanted to speak to limited English proficiency. Just, it's a comment, but a mom went there and had horrific pain, but there was no translator at the hospital. And she's in the emergency room and they're doing procedures to her and she doesn't know what's going on. And she's trying to get ahold of her daughter, who has a new infant, and trying to like bring that baby into the emergency room when there possibly is COVID, and it was just a hot mess. So, you know, we do try at KUNA to level the playing field by bringing in translation services and being available for that. So, but, but we can only do so much. So it would be great if, well, yeah, I'm just really happy that we have identified this health equity as one of the number one in our health, yeah.
Nice. Element. Thank you, Kimberly. All good? Sorry for rushing you earlier. You have 15 minutes to spare now.
It's okay, we have another.
And you do have another business item. Thanks, y'all. I will, again, type up the notes and send them onwards to staff. You bet.
Well, thank you, Heather, for facilitating a great discussion. And thank you, Planning Commission, for participating with us tonight. Yes. Okay, so that concludes our general plan portion of the meeting. Are we going to let the commissioners leave? If they, yes, if you do so want, you can feel free to head out. The hour does grow late, so.
Au revoir.
So that concludes our general plan portion of the meeting. And now we will get through our one business item to be able to meet a grant deadline. And so that's going to be item A this evening, which is to adopt resolution number 234-14, authorizing an application for the Department of Housing and Urban Development's Pathways to Removing Obstacles to Housing Grant. May we have a brief staff report?
Yeah, there is actually a lot inside this grant application proposal, but I will try and keep it brief. Give me this if you want me to cut it short. The reason why we scheduled it for tonight was because the original grant application deadline was November 1st. Obviously, that's your next city council meeting. And so in order to apply, we would have had to, we had to have a special meeting. And so that's, that's why it's on your agenda tonight. The grant deadline did get extended to November 6th, which is after your November 1st meeting. So, you know, I do apologize for that was outside our control. The proposal tries to take advantage of a funding source that's new. It's called the HUD Pro-Housing Grant, and it is squarely intended to address obstacles, you know, that we can address at the government level to development of housing. It would put us in line to actually get the pro-housing designation, the state pro-housing designation, if we accomplish the activities in the grant. And so I wanted to draw that distinction because, again, they're called the same thing, but they're really different, you know, processes. This, this that we're doing tonight is to apply for a grant. The proposal that we put together in this grant application, which was noticed more than 15 days ago as the grant requires and was posted on our website for public review as the grant requires, is to really implement the work that you're currently reviewing with the changes in the general plan. So we have done a really good job over the last several years of pulling together very different grant sources to do the general planning work. The general planning work is going to give you a policy-level document, the general plan, that sets forth all these new ideas of how to implement, you know, development into the future. It's also going to provide you with a gateway form-based code, and that's it. We still need to implement several changes in our zoning ordinance, our land use code, to become consistent with the general plan policies that you're adopting. We would have the opportunity through this grant to further those ideas and concepts. You look today at the land use element and the infill opportunity zones, and many of you have come to the same conclusion as the conversations that we've been having in the community about having form-based codes in these areas as well. And so the grant could pay for those form-based codes. And so specifically, what we're targeting is, one, for the downtown area, including Union Town, that infill opportunity zone, and then the Valley West infill opportunity zone. So developing form-based codes that would be specific to those areas may borrow from some of the same concepts, but, you know, would have independent public engagement processes to develop what the form-based codes are there. And then the third component is really to adopt a formalized accessory dwelling unit program. We haven't adopted a new ordinance locally because the state law has continued to change. And we kind of made a strategic decision to wait until those changes settled down so that we weren't constantly playing catch-up with our ordinance. State law allows for that. If you don't have a local ordinance that implements the state law, then you have to implement the state law. And so we've just been implementing state law. But we'd like to codify the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, in particular with the way that the council, the Planning Commission has directed some of the implementation of it, to try and be as welcoming to accessory dwelling units as possible. And then to layer into that, a marketing program to educate people about.
And then to layer into that a marketing program to educate people about accessory dwelling units, as well as a new loan program that would help homeowners build accessory dwelling units. They're really difficult to finance unless you have a lot of equity in your home. And so the, the planning process that we're proposing, that we apply for these grant funds, would do all of those things, implementing the, you know, the, the vision that you're working on currently. We don't currently have any other funding sources identified to do this work. This is the first opportunity that's come up, that's presented as a, you know, a wholesale planning process that would, would allow us to do this. The minimum grant amount is actually a million dollars. They wouldn't accept a, you know, a proposal for less than a million dollars. And so we've added into that grant, you know, several hundred thousand dollars for staffing, to pay for staff. Currently, the majority of the staff work that's going into this effort, the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan and et cetera, is general fund funded. And so this would provide an avenue to have a grant source actually pay for the work, and we wouldn't have to dedicate general fund resources to that effort. But the majority, the vast majority of the funds that we're proposing are to hire consultants to help us write the codes, do the engagement, and ensure that we have that added staff capacity to, to, you know, come in successful and on time for these. We've proposed in the grant that we would do this within two years. The grant application, or the grant actually allows for multiple years after that. And so there is a backstop, or, you know, I'm sorry, a buffer, that if we aren't able to complete it in two years, that we, we can extend the grant. But this really flows directly from all of the work that you're doing now. All of the engagement that we've done up until this point, over the last five years, and in earnest over the last two years, that I expressed to you in our last business item, is informing this work. So it's not like we're starting from scratch, and I think we're going to hit the ground running and be able to, you know, get a lot of, a lot of the work done, you know, early in the, in the grant period if we're successful at it. So I think those are the main things I want to say about it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I know there's a lot in there. The application is like 40 pages long almost.
Okay. Great. Thank you, David. We all are also going to accept public comment on this item, but I will ask for any clarifying questions that the council has before we open it up for public comment.
Yeah, I think you answered a lot of my questions when you were talking about that. Definitely, I think it's a real bonus that a lot of work that you're doing will free up a lot of general funds because you'll be paid out of this grant, which I think is wonderful. I guess a question is, so what's the turnaround from submitting this grant to knowing if we've got this grant? Because I guess my question is, it's a Biden-Harris grant, God forbid. What would happen if there is change in the government in 2024? Is the grant money still going to be available?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that question. Yeah. I don't, it.
Do you know and will hear it? Do they give it any dead talk?
I, I don't know that the, our grant application is 40 pages long. The NOFO that explains how to apply for the grant is like 150 pages long. And I'm familiar with it, but I don't know where that information is. I don't know what their turnaround time is going to be. And I, I couldn't guess what's going to happen if, if there's a new administration.
And to be clear, to be clear, the work that you're going to be doing in the capacity of this grant is work that you're already doing now. This is not going to be additional work for you, correct?
Yeah, this is work that we have to implement one way or the other anyway. In the grant application, we've defined it as we understand it based on the community conversation to date. But the actual outcomes are going to be subject to additional public engagement.
And what kind of public engagement do we envision we're going to be able to do with, with this grant?
I think we're going to, you know, kind of leverage the, the lessons that we've learned over the last several years and, and continue to, you know, try and do, you know, you know, deep and broad engagement, but at the same time recognizing that, you know, we have just gone through this process. If the, if the general plan land use element says make residential medium 25 units per acre, then the land use code update that we need to do is to change it to 25 units per acre. So there's a lot of one-for-one parity between the work that you've done. I don't intend to do a whole lot of additional engagement on those kinds of changes. Now, the form-based codes that we propose for, you know, these, you know, additional areas, I mean, clearly, we need to get to those communities and engage those neighborhoods. Here are what's important to them, what they want to see reflected, and those kinds of things. But I also think that we've got a lot of lessons learned from the work that we've done in the gateway code. We have a template for how to, you know, think about these processes. We've already had a lot of the conversations about what taller buildings are going to mean and those kinds of things. And so it really is going to be up to the council to direct, you know, how broad that engagement needs to be before you're comfortable making a decision to adopt. But, you know, I can see this, based on the work that we've already done, as being fairly tactical engagement.
And so I know there's 85 billion, million dollars is basically the pot that's available. What is the track record of rural communities such as ours getting those kind of grants?
Are you suggesting we apply for all 85 million?
Absolutely.
You know, it's unclear to me. This is a brand-new funding source, but the, the NOFO does talk a lot about encouraging rural jurisdictions to apply. We've had some contact with their, their staff, which are very cagey because of the restrictions that they're under. So it's a shot in the dark. I have no idea what our competitiveness will be. I think that the work that we've done leading up to this gives us a really strong narrative. I feel very strong about the application we've written in terms of meeting the objectives of the HUD Pro Housing Grant. And we've done a lot of the labor. A lot of the things that they're asking jurisdictions to do, we've already done. And so I think that gives us some advantage there.
Yeah, I guess you miss 100% of the shots that you don't take, right?
Just a quick comment, just to discuss the pro-housing part. I'm just grateful that it will get us closer to that. I've been pestering David about that for years, I think, like, how can we make this happen? And so the fact that this will get us closer, I think is great. So, thank you.
So a couple things. I'm looking at, I guess, page 15 about the key stakeholders. And I'm looking at the work that we're doing in the BIPOC community and equity. And I know while we're already doing this work, and I really appreciate the work that we are doing, will this allow some expansion so that we can dig even deeper and bring us money for that?
Yeah, absolutely. We haven't really identified who the engagement partners will be, but I see bringing on facilitators. And if, you know, if Sharon and Meredith, or, or, you know, somebody who's doing that kind of work will, will have us again, we'd love to, you know, expand on that. Just by way of information, we've also incorporated that kind of engagement in our recent local coastal program grant that we received. And so we'll be, you know, we're, we're already starting to bake this in. And in fact, you know, when the, this is a way aside, so I'm going to stop right now and talk to you about it later.
Okay. I, I was just also thinking about, you know, folks with limited English proficiency. Will this, like, provide? I know, like you said, I think it was on page six when I was reading the agenda, that we're translating this, you know, in Spanish at least. Will this allow more of that so that people are in the know of what's going on?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think in particular in the Valley West, where we have a large Spanish-speaking community, that that'll be, you know, absolutely key to, to those discussions.
Okay. And then one more question, and I'm sure everybody received an email about just concerns of division of labor and an increased workload. And we all appreciate, you know, all the work that you do. Is this going to give you even more work? Like, are you going to be doing 70-hour, 80-hour weeks now? Or how does, I mean, I know we're already doing a lot of the work, but will we hire or outsource, or?
The vast majority of the grant is for outside consultants to do the work.
Okay.
It, you know, it does require staff resources. You know, I, I, right now, D-Lo has, you know, been a key asset in getting the work done that we're, you know, managing the work that we're doing for the Gateway Area Plan and the Form-Based Code and all these other things. She's been a critical piece to our team, making sure that we're meeting our milestones. And that's the largest body of our work right now. And so I see a similar function, you know, moving into implementation, that we have, you know, at least one planner who's nearly 100% committed to making sure that that work is getting done and we're delivering on those promises. There's, you know, we, you know, put some of the deputy's time, some of the director's time, some of our admin's time in there to make sure that we're trying to relieve some of the burden that the general fund would have to take on, you know, from the residents to bring this work forward and ensuring that we've covered our, our, our time in that grant. I base that time on, you know, certain percentage of workload over a course of two years. If it is extended out further than that, then, you know, we may have to have another conversation, or if we're able to, you know, float the, you know, the, the time over to that extension, then we'd be able to cover some of those costs. But I'd, I'd update at that time when we get there.
So if we're on like the two-year track, it's going to free up money in the general fund that could be used for other projects?
Absolutely. And if we get into three and four years, we'll probably have to start looking at either additional grant sources or, you know, tapping the general fund. I mean, it is, it's necessary work that we need to do to complete this work that we set out to update the general plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's open up for public comment. So if you'd like to comment on the HUD Pro Housing Grant application, now is your time. Make your way to the podium. You just got to go.
I'm sure you'll approve this. And generally, I'm in favor of bringing federal funds in to help with the planning process. The, just going to bring up a few points here. It's 85 million dollars nationally. I've seen already over 25 applicants to this grant. They, the city, as David said, the Community Development Director said, "The city noticed this 15 days in advance and put the application on their website." Every one of the other 25 applicants had a different picture of what that 15-day period is. They had the application available to the public for 15 days. I think that would be a much more transparent situation here. That would require the application to be done a few weeks in advance of our current process. My concern, which you discussed here, is the, it puts a tremendous amount of staff time, based upon the actual application. The activity takes place over, mostly over a period of 18 months on the timeline that's given there. It shows Senior Planner Joe Mateer as committing about 90% of his time on this grant. It shows David Lawyer as committing about 38% of his grant, and then another half-time person. Given that, it may be required to hire more people for Community Development Department. The, I think the application should have been included as a PDF document in your packet. I think that having it as a link is not appropriate because the, that link could change. Whatever on the other side of that link can change, whereas if in a PDF in your packet, then it's firm. The amount of the grant for consultants is over $900,000. It has Form-Based Code development for downtown Arcata and for Valley West at $275,000 each. To put that in perspective, the entire budget for Gateway Area Form-Based Code is $150,000. So it seems excessive there. And that, and, and for the gateway, that included all the outreach, surveys, graphics, and presentations from Ben Noble. The, I would like to see a different procedure for how these grant applications are handled. We experienced this with the Home Key. Basically, the timeline is such that by the time it comes to you, you really can't change it because it has to be changed and then come back to you to have the changes approved. And so I think it should be possible to figure out that grants like this really do require like two meetings in a row, two, the one, one meeting being a special meeting just to approve the grant. Because if you can't make changes to it, then it really limits your opportunity to, you know, for you or the, or the public, or the Planning Commission, to bring up amendments of any kind. That's basically it. Again, the, I hope you do get it. Okay, and we'll go from there. And we'll see. Thanks.
I would start out with, I think a lot of the goals in this grant are, are good ones from the standpoint of looking at different areas, and also the ADU aspect of it too, because there's a lot of changes that are going on. Where I would be concerned on is what I, what I've seen already from the Planning Commission's standpoint in the late spring and the early summer, when they basically changed the designation of a lot of areas in Arcata from low density to high density. And I think at the time, one particular commissioner was, his reasoning was that he was concerned that somebody was going to come along and demolish a house and put a McMansion in these areas, which is, to my opinion, totally false. That's, that's a narrative that's happening in places like Santa Monica, Manhattan Beach, you know, Beverly Hills, where, and I, I've seen this recently, where they come in and they knock whatever size house down, and they build like a 12,000-square-foot house. And you can see the signs right in front of the yard. But to use that example as why, you know, we need to change low density to high density in these areas is, is just totally not accurate. If somebody actually came to this area, they would go knock something down by the beach or up in the hills with nice views. So, and where I'm going with this, I think we need to have some consultants come in to take a look at this because this is not happening in any place in, in California. I'll give you an example. I mean, down LA is an area that needs tremendous amount of housing for, I mean, it's the massive amount of homeless folks. And all, all the construction, and I've, I've seen this on the metros, there, it's all planned along the metro lines. So you'll go miles and miles and look out the window from city after city, and there's all single-family houses. And they're not going across the street and just, you know, here goes four stories here and there. That, that is not acceptable. I mean, that's because they, they had experts look at it, and it was something that was argued about. And they, and they looked at all these things, and they decided what was appropriate was along the metro lines, along, and, and urban core areas in the city where it made sense, not just to throw them up in single-family houses. And you did have pushback against this because you did, you were very vague in how you threw this out, and a few people got wind of it and showed up, and they weren't very happy. So I don't think you've really explained this to the public, and there's going to be quite a bit of a pushback on this when someone understands that, you know, all of a sudden a house could, something four stories can pop up next to their, their place. And I just don't think it's acceptable to do that. I think there's a lot of areas you could focus on first before you do that.
I didn't get a chance to read everything. I just saw the email yesterday, and then today I had some time to try and read through this draft and try and understand it. And I got to say, when I first see HUD, it just puts an image in my mind that is very urban and very un, uncreative and unhealthy for a community like ours. I really do appreciate the component of the ADU aspect of promoting that and getting that into the discussion of our, our growth as a community. I was talking to some people on the bus a few weeks ago, and one of the women who actually was staying at The Grove, not living there, but she says, "Arcata needs to be a shire." And, and as opposed to, you know, what I think of when I think of HUD housing and, and grant money is used for that kind of thing, I just see kind of tenement concept. So I don't know what to say about this particular grant. It looks like there's a lot of competition, and I think Arcata can be a standout as a rural, small rural college town, trying to adjust to the change for the future. But I'm going to just have to study it a little bit more. But I just fear that it might push us into a, a design or a, 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 a look that I don't think many of us want. So the ADU thing is great, but, yeah. Well, I know you guys are good at getting grants, so I don't know what to say, but I'm going to read more about it and get back to you if I have anything further to say.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne. Do we have any online comments?
Two. One has stuck with us. Go ahead, Colin.
Hello again. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP. I just want to say that we support the application, and, you know, most of the scope of work appears to be implementing the updated general plan and other policy directions from the council. And, you know, we all know that any plan or policy is only as good as the implementation. So the more resources that we can get to implement, the better. Thank you.
All right. We're back. Anybody else online? Thank you, Colin. Okay. Any final points, or I will take a motion, or any of that?
Sure. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 234-14, authorizing an application for the Department of Housing and Urban Development's Pathway to Removing Obstacles to Housing Grant.
I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Call the question. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, public. Shout out to the Planning Commission. Meeting is adjourned.